All right, I think we're on. Good evening and everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting. All the selectmen are here. We'll do a modified Pledge of Allegiance. Leah, why don't you lead us today?
All right, great. I pledge allegiance.
This is to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Leah. We're gonna start with anything for citizens' input, Christina? Thank you. She shook her head no. Bill, we'll start with COVID-19 update. We got some good news, I think.
We do. So can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so first of all, there is, according to the local numbers here in Foxborough, our numbers have dropped rather significantly in the past few weeks. Today, as of four o'clock, the numbers were about, we currently have thirty-seven active cases in town. That's a significant drop during the past few weeks. We had, folks remember, we had almost two hundred cases at one point. We still have had, we have no hospitalization to report at this point in time. We have, and we still have just a total of two deaths occurred since the beginning of the COVID-19 epidemic. So, in all in all, it's good news to report that we are not getting any worse. We're certainly on the, on the, on the better end of what's going on. As far as the weekly update, I did provide for you in your, in your board docs this evening, a copy of Matt Brennan's report that he provided me this afternoon. And it talks a lot about the, all the new reopenings that are gonna be occurring as of, as of starting as of yesterday. And it's really good news to see that a lot of venues are starting to reopen, including venues that have concert halls, theaters, and indoor performance spaces at fifty percent capacity, or five hundred, five hundred people maximum. Indoor recreational activities with greater potential for contact, laser tag, roller skating, trampolines, obstacle courses, et cetera, are at fifty percent. There's a whole list of other events and facilities that can be opened now as a result of, at fifty percent capacity, which, which I will, I'll forego reading. But additional changes in Phase Three, Step Two, include restaurants will no longer be subject to a, to a percentage seating capacity limit, and the capacity is only limited to requirements of six feet between tables, which is a significant step forward for us. Musical performances are allowed in restaurants with appropriate distancing. Fitting rooms may open in all retail businesses again. The first time we've seen that in a long time. Effective March twenty-second, subject to public health data, the gatherings limit will increase for event venues and public seedings, but will stay the same in private settings. One hundred person maximum for indoor event venues. One hundred and fifty person max for outdoor event venues. Effective March twenty-second, subject to public health data, the Commonwealth will move to Phase Four, Step One. This will reopen indoor and outdoor stadiums such as Gillette. Arenas and ballparks will open with a twelve percent capacity limit. Overnight camps will be allowed to open for, for the summer of 2021, which is great news as well. Exhibition and convention halls may reopen, subject to gathering limits and event rules. Dance floors may open at weddings and events, at weddings and events only. All other Phase Four industries will not be able to open until further reopening steps have been achieved. As far as the COVID testing update, currently the town of Foxborough is in the yellow category. The town's daily average incident rate is moderate of sixty-eight cases. Well, that was, that was earlier. I just checked it this afternoon. It was, is at thirty-seven cases. So we lost a lot of cases as of today. This was actually done by Matt as of last week, but he has updated some of the information. As of today, March second, we are down to thirty-seven active cases, as he points out. So we're now in the yellow, which is a significant step forward for us. We've been in the yellow now for about two weeks, which is about twenty-six point two cases per one hundred thousand incidents in the state. And then vaccination update, on Saturday, February twenty-seventh, the FDA issued emergency use authorization for Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine. Department of Health does not believe the vaccine will be widely available in the state until at least the end of March. Though I did hear in the news as of today that they were, they were looking to distribute some of it as early as next week. We just don't know where at this point. Messages upon the public health reports as of March first, a total of one point seven six million vaccinations have been administered within the state. At this time, all groups in Phase One, as well as groups one and two in Phase Two are eligible to receive a vaccine. The next order of priority is Phase Two of the state's vaccination plan is, is early education in K through twelve, transit, utility, food, and garbage culture sanitation, public works, and public health workers. Information on the timeline to vaccinate these workers is forthcoming. The state continues to focus on adding appointments at mass vaccination sites statewide. You can make appointments in various ways, including the online method at www.mass.gov/covidvaccine or the www.massmain, maimmunizations.org, directly through your local participating retail pharmacy or mass vaccination site. If you do not have access to a computer, you can, you can call two-one-one for further information on that. So that is the latest on that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And so we're pleased to see that we are trending in the right direction. I did read this afternoon too that the president addressed the nation this afternoon and indicated that he, he thought that there'd be enough vaccinations in place by the end of May to, to fully vaccinate all adults here in the country. So that's a really good sign. That means that more things will begin to open as, at, at the beginning of the summer. So it's great, great news to report and good progress being made on all fronts. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Bill. We have a guest on coming up next, our new Norfolk County Sheriff. I'd like to introduce Patrick McDermott. I think I see you there, Patrick. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen's meeting and cable access. Congratulations on your win and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was great to see, hear the town managers report. I've known Bill Keegan for a number of years. Bill, I owe you a phone call. It's coming your way. Last time we might, I'm not sure when the last time we were together, but it might have been several years ago, right around this time of the year at the infamous Dedham St. Patrick's Day luncheon, perhaps.
Yeah, it truly is infamous, Pat. That's for sure.
That's what I mean, infamous. So the next time I'm doing any kind of singing, hopefully it's gonna be down in Foxborough at some point soon. But I just want to thank the Foxborough Board to give me the chance to come here tonight to speak a little bit about the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office and how we can work hand in hand with you to meet your, your local needs. Just to give you a little feedback about who I am, I'm a resident of the city of Quincy. I served on the Quincy City Council for six, for six years back in the nineties. I've been an attorney for the last twenty years. Eighteen of those years was serving as your Register of Probate for Norfolk County at the Probate and Family Court. So I've been very much involved with the communities throughout Norfolk County over the course of my career. And I welcome this new opportunity to serve as the sheriff to bring a new perspective on what we kind of define as public safety in the office of the sheriff and to the town of Foxborough. My mission as a sheriff is to make sure that the sheriff's office serves as a public safety resource for Foxborough and all of the twenty-eight communities throughout Norfolk County. As we know from this past year, it's really time to reconsider what we mean by the term "public safety." A lot's been going on, and I want to push past the limited understanding of what we do in the sheriff's office of just simply care and custody of inmates who have been sent to the correction facility. But, and rather expand this to include taking the proactive approach of improving conditions that make residents safer. And that includes working with at-risk populations that may in fact make poor decisions that lead to criminal behavior. So prevention, intervention, education, and hope, the theme of what we hope to run on. One of the ways we're gonna do this in the sheriff's office is by expanding our programming and our community outreach. We're opening up opportunities for residents to make use of our ropes courses up in Braintree, which is where our youth services programming predominantly is. We really want to bring that, that's been a successful program for a number of years. And unfortunately, it's way up in Braintree for our southern folks in Norfolk County. So one of my goals is to expand and replicate that program down in the, in the Franklin, Foxborough, Rantham area so that the, the folks in the southern part of the county would be able to participate in such a great program. We want to focus on the at-risk populations. That includes many of our juveniles in our communities. We're looking to actively increase participation in our senior programming, which includes the life-saving Are You Okay program, a very successful program that I inherited from my predecessors. And we've already seen the benefits of that program, having seen two lives saved just in the last couple of months. So we're grateful to have that program still active. It's, it's something that we're very proud of, that we reach out to our seniors every day, check in with them. And if in fact there's any kind of distress issue that we haven't heard back from them, we were able to contact their, their loved ones or the local police department to do a wellness check. And that's where those life-saving things come in. My goal is to boost that program. So we're looking to reach out to more seniors. We're gonna be activating some publications in multiple languages so that we can enhance that program to serve more people. We're also continuing to make our security resources at the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office more available to communities like Foxborough, including our mobile command center, our K nine units, and our vital strategic partnerships with programs such as Metrolec. Our programming is not just about, you know, preventing crime, but about making sure that every resident in Norfolk County feels safe. And this includes feeling safe from the crimes that are committed in the, in the town and throughout the county, but also feeling safe from other challenges. Obviously, the recent pandemic of COVID-19 has ravaged, you know, locally, statewide, country, internationally. And we want to be able to be a resource for that. We're, you know, we're, we're actively vaccinating our, the inmates, our staff. And we want to be a partner with the community wherever we can be on that, on that, this health pandemic, reaching out and working with towns, whether it's through volunteering at a vaccination clinic or providing food for, for, for folks that need it. Climate change is certainly another issue that we're, that the sheriff's office can, can participate in in terms of safety. Social isolation, obviously, I talked about seniors who, who may need the Are You Okay program. Seniors have been, have been isolated now for almost a year in their homes. Some are living by themselves, some don't have family. And there's also, you know, an increase of mental health problems that people feel very isolated. And I think the sheriff's office can serve as a resource for that as well. The opioid addiction system problem still remains prevalent among us. Systemic racism, much more. These threats don't simply stop at town borders. So we need to work together to tackle all these issues head-on. At the same time, though, each community experiences these problems in unique waves. Because of this, no one-size-fits-all approach will work for all towns. My office is uniquely situated to help coordinate responses to public safety challenges across the county. But this coordination will only be successful if it's guided by your experiences and your needs in your community. As sheriff, I want to work closely with Foxborough to make sure that we're meeting your town's specific needs and expectations. We have the opportunity to make lasting positive change in the county, and partnering with towns like Foxborough is the first step in making that happen. Through partnerships with the Board of Selectmen, local public safety officials, our chief of police, our fire chief, human service agencies such as veterans organizations, school districts, councils on aging, we can work together to tailor our public safety efforts to what works best for Foxborough. So I just want to say thank you for letting me introduce or reintroduce myself to some of you tonight. I look forward to working alongside with you as a partner, as the Norfolk County Sheriff, to make sure that Foxborough and Norfolk County remain safe for everyone. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, given I'm only eight weeks on the job, so I clearly don't have all the answers yet. But any ideas that you might have, I know Dan Manning is, is, I think, on the call. Dan, if you would give a quick wave to everybody. Dan is my Director of External Affairs and Government Affairs to, to work with the towns. He has a team of people that are actively gonna be participating in senior programs to make sure that, that we have a robust outreach program into the town. So I want to make sure that we remain active and, and anything that we can do. One of the things I forgot to mention, one of the programs I think that the town of Foxborough may have taken advantage of over the, taken opportunity of over the years is our, our inmate assistance program, where inmates who are on a pre-release program, who have, you know, some, some talents can go out and help a community, whether it's a cleanup effort or repainting of a municipal building or, or a nonprofit agency. I know they've gone to Knights of Columbuses and Elks Falls to help out, build things and paint. That program's unfortunately been on hold because of COVID-19 and because of the, the decrease in our, in our numbers at the jail. We don't have as many access to that. But as of yesterday, our community outreach officers are back on the job. Programming is back on the job as of March first. So we'll be looking to get that program back up and running so that we have those services available for the, for the towns. So other than that, thank you very much. And if I have any, if you have any questions or ideas that you have, happy to take them.
Yeah, any questions from the board? Comments?
Just one comment, if I could, Doc. You know, the sheriff, I know, has stepped into a position that works closely with our Foxborough Police because of the stadium events. And those events we couldn't hold for our community without their support over the years from the opening of the stadium. So it's, it's nice to see a new sheriff that has a clear-cut vision of working with other communities.
Yeah, thank you. We, I actually met with our, our, our team that actually does go out and do, do the details with the municipalities, and I've talked to the chief. Certainly, we, there's, there's the reopening that's going on, and there's, you know, the speculation of when concerts and obviously football, soccer, and the other things that go on at the stadium at a Patriots' place will happen. But we end up with eighty to ninety of our officers participate in, you know, the public safety issues on those big events. And so we'll certainly continue to do so. We want to make sure we have a presence there that, you know, that, that, that the residents of Foxborough feel safe, as well as the guests that come and enjoy the, the entertainment at that venue.
Yeah, I didn't realize you're, you guys had that many officers at a big event. That's great.
Yeah, it's a good partnership between the state police, the town of Foxborough. I think, yeah, we lead by the chief. The chief kind of runs the show and the, with the state police. And, you know, wherever we needed, we needed to be deployed, we're happy to do so. And we have some resources that are available too, like I said, the K nine unit and our, our mobile command center, whenever that's required for, whether it's crowd control or any kind of emergency crisis management. So that's what we're here for, to be a resource for the town.
I'll thank you. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say hello to, firstly, a formal hello to Pat. As the new sheriff, I've known Pat for a number of years in my years in Dedham. And he's a quality guy. I know that he's, he did a lot of great work when he was the Register of Probate in, in Norfolk County for a number of years. And, and I know that he will certainly be, everything he's, he said he would be this evening and, because he's a, he's a very personable guy. And other than that, he has a hidden talent most people don't, don't realize, but he's a terrific singer. So, so if we ever want somebody to sing the National Anthem somewhere, we can, we know who to call now. We have somebody, we have a resource. All right, it's good to see you, Pat.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much, Patrick.
Have a great night. We'll talk soon.
Bye-bye now. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund's expenditure request. This is sort of like a little bit of a housekeeping issue, but it's a little complicated also. So I know Paige has been practicing her pared-down explanation to the board, but Paige, you're up.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I, so yes, so suddenly the Affordable Housing Trust is relevant. And why is that? As you know, we've been talking about housing for a while. And while we've been having our conversation on housing and doing the housing production plan, we've also been thinking about the Walnut Street project. As you all know, the Housing Authority owns sixteen acres on Walnut Street. And I don't think Greg Spear is able to join us tonight, but he, he wanted to. But he, so we've been working together on this, and we're starting to see a little bit of progress. And that's why we're here tonight. So just to give you some background, we've gotten, as you know, we got a Housing Choice Grant a couple of years ago. And with that, we were able to have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar intersection design for the Walnut Street Commercial Street 140 intersection. When we met with the selectman a couple of years ago about this matter, and at that time, actually, the selectman authorized fifty thousand dollars to do what we're actually going to be talking about tonight, which was never spent. One of the things that was said is, without a signal at that intersection, the selectman did not feel that that project could proceed. So we heard that loud and clear. We know the CERPET study that was done out there showed that that is a very dangerous intersection. The rates of speed make it dangerous for crashes. While in other areas of town, you might have crashes as well. They're at much lower speeds. So we, we heard that loud and clear, and Chris and I were able to get a Housing Choice Grant, which paid the two-hundred-thousand dollars for the design. So that was great news. It also has covered forty-seven thousand dollars to do a design of sewer to run from Central Street down Walnut, across 140, and then over to the sixteen-acre site on the other side of 140. So that, that also leveraged the property a bit because when, previously, when we were doing it with just septic system, it really wasn't gonna support a development of sufficient size to really warrant developer interest. And unfortunately, one of the things that the Housing Authority and now me, I have learned is that the days of the government building these Housing Authority projects are no more. Because of prevailing wage and all the requirements, you now need to go through an RFP process and have a developer come in and do it. You see that across from, on Baker, Baker Street, across from the Carlin and Court. There is some housing across the street from Carlin and Court that is subsidized, but it is not actually run or managed by the town. So that's the current state of affairs. So we've been grappling with how to get this property off the ground. We got that utility design work. That was a great accomplishment. We now have since gotten a, a grant, although it's a technical assistance grant. So they don't write you a check. What they do is Mass Development handled all the procurement for us. And we now have a consultant onboard to do the RFP that we were gonna pay fifty thousand dollars to hire our own consultant and deal with all our own procurement. Now we have Mass Development, who has given us a consultant to do this work. So that's where we are. So that's kind of a little bit of background. We're, this consultant who will be coming onboard in the next month or so. We did include some sort of conversations and visioning, so we do intend to do a little bit more work on this. We realized that while this project has been talked about, none of us really knows what the project is. And that's because we actually don't yet know. You know, we know we have sixteen acres. We know we have a sewer service that's capable to be extended there. But beyond that, you know, one thing, none of us is, is a developer of this type of housing. So I think we've learned too that we don't want to overly prescribe. So this consultant is gonna help us figure out how to solicit proposals for projects that then the town will evaluate against certain criteria. So we can, because we, the town owns this land and the town holds all the control. So I want to reiterate that. That being said, we also have to be realistic because obviously a developer's not gonna build something if there's not something in it for them. So it's a balancing act to make sure we get what the community needs, but also they're going to, developers are interested in the project. So why am I here tonight? Two reasons. Well, one, money. But the, the reasons I'm here is two, two things. One's proactive and one's just more par for the course. The proactive thing is that in research, when we received the contract for mass development for that thirty thousand dollars worth of consulting services, I read the fine print and realized that there's a repayment clause. So what that means is when the town goes to sell this property, assuming that's the way it goes or does sort of some, some under conveyance, that thirty thousand dollars has to be paid back. I guess it makes sense, but that's, you know, that's just the way it is. But there's also a clause in that contract that says that if the town pays it back within one year, they only have to pay back twenty-five percent. So I'm not that good at numbers, but I thought that was a really good deal. So I talked to, to Bill and to George and, and asked them if they thought that was something we should propose. And Bill suggested that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund made sense for that type of expenditure since that, it's exactly what it is. It's affordable housing, and it's, it's, this, this trust fund has been sitting there since I started. We've had three-hundred-twenty thousand dollars sitting there from the Chestnut Green Project. And we, it's kind of too much to fritter away, and it's too little to really accomplish. Like you can't build any affordable housing with three-hundred-twenty. So it's, we've been, we've been very protective of it. But that said, Bill had a really good idea that this would be a good use of, of resources. So why I'm suggesting this is smart is we're saving seventy-five percent. And if you recall, the selectman had already voted to spend fifty thousand on this very thing. So in, in effect, it'll be costing us seventy-five hundred dollars to do what you had already voted to do for fifty. So I'm proposing that the board spend seventy-five hundred dollars out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for that. Do you want me to keep going on the second one? Okay, so then the second one, this is a more frustrating but predictable thing is that, and maybe I should have Chris explain a little bit, this highway design, intersection that we designed for Walnut Street is going well. But as, is par for the course, Mass Highway, Mass DOT has to review the plans in certain stages. And Chris, do you want to sort of explain how we ended up? Bottom line is, extra work was required by Mass DOT, so we're now a little short. And Chris, do you want to just give a highlight overview of why?
Definitely. So as Paige said, we, we received two-hundred thousand dollars for the intersection design. The scope of services was really built off of the CERPET study that was done a number of years ago that, that looked at Route 140 from the Common all the way down to Norton. So we had a pretty good, pretty good scope, we thought. So we hired TEC is the engineering firm that's doing the, the design for us. We actually had a, an initial meeting, kickoff meeting with Mass DOT District Five, which is the local district, explaining to them what we were looking to do, where we had our initial information, and, and got their feedbacks on that initial scope of services. Local district was on board with it at the time. So we started the twenty-five percent design on that intersection. We got to that twenty-five percent design, submitted that to DOT. Because it's a signal, it also goes to the Boston office. And when we got the comments back on the twenty-five percent design, they had us looking at a number of different things that we didn't hear from them initially or, or expect to have to look at. They wanted us to look at the off-ramp from Exit Seven that comes back towards Foxborough, whether we were gonna, they actually initially asked us to signalize that off-ramp. So that was additional design work. They also then asked us to look at putting a roundabout in there at that intersection. So that was something else that had not come up previously from DOT. So that was something else we had to shift, shift scope of services within that two-hundred thousand dollars to accommodate those comments. After taking that step and redesigning the off-ramp, signaling that design work, they then said, well, we actually don't want to signal there. We want you to just realign the ramp coming off of ninety-five. So it's further away from the Walnut Street intersection. So again, money had to be shifted from that two-hundred thousand dollars to get us to a seventy-five percent design to meet the comments on that twenty-five percent design comments from, from DOT. So where we stand right now is we have really a fifty percent design. We're trying to get it to a seventy-five percent design plan. That'll allow us and, and put us in a much better spot to apply for Mass, a Mass Works grant so we can actually construct the signal and the upgrades to the intersection. So with that, you know, we're, we're looking at and have received a, an amendment from TEC for an additional thirty thousand dollars to do that, to cover all the extra costs that, that we didn't expect to do upfront. So that's the other piece of the request that we have tonight.
So again, that's, thanks, Chris. So that's directly related to the Affordable Housing Project, known as Walnut Street. So for that reason, we're asking for that thirty thousand. And the reason it's so important is the Mass Works Grant Program. That's, that's the funding source that built the, the roundabout over at Forbes Crossing. So we've been successful in the past. Projects associated with affordable housing tend to score very high for Mass Works. This is a state highway. It is a dangerous intersection. So we believe that this will score fairly well. This, usually Mass Works Grants go in at, in August. And this year, they've changed the way the whole funding grant process is for the state. And so now we have to have our expression of interest in on April first. So we are very fearful that if we don't have seventy-five percent plans, we will not be fully eligible for the Mass Works Grant. So for that reason, we're recommending that the thirty thousand is wisely spent right now on this to keep this project moving and get us well positioned for the Mass Works Grant.
Just remind everybody, Paige, where the thirty's coming from?
Oh, sorry. So again, from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in addition to the seventy-five hundred, which has three-hundred-twenty thousand dollars in it today, and it has for, since I started back in two thousand and fifteen, I believe. And we are proposing 7,500 for, um, the mass development contract repayment and then 30,000 to, for the additional scope that was required by Mass DOT to ensure that we can get to 75% plans.
Awesome. Great. Uh, any questions from the board? Yeah, Leah, you're on mute though. Okay.
Two quick questions, Paige. Um, can you just confirm for us? I assume that they have approved, that Greg and, and his board has approved since he was supposed to be here tonight. If you can just approve, confirm that for us?
Yes.
And then the second piece is you sound confident that this additional money will get us to the 75%. Do we have any concerns that they'll come back with additional scope? Are we pretty confident this will take us there?
No, this will take us there. We, we had a a final meeting or another meeting with that Mass DOT and we had, I don't know, seven, maybe 10 staff from Mass DOT on both the District Five and the Boston Office to ask those kind of last three questions we had to get us to that 70, 75%. So I'm confident this will get us there.
Thank you.
I got a question. So it's actually, um, I'm not opposed to doing this at all, but this is a kind of down the road question a little bit. So the town currently owns the land. We're going to put it out for RFP. And then as a town, we get to decide which developer is going to build what we kind of envisioned. Is that how this goes, Paige?
Um, it's actually going to be the Housing Authority. This is a housing, a Housing Authority project.
Okay. So they have final say on what goes there?
Well, they're going to be issuing the RFP, I believe. And so, I mean, I don't know if they're going to want to have a committee, you know, I don't know how yet. We, that's part of probably the process we have. We haven't even started the discussion, um, on sort of the framework of that. But from a permitting perspective, I do believe that the most likely way that they, that a developer would have to permit this would be through the 40B process. So, um, and the reason for that is now, again, we are over 10%, so the town does not have to approve a 40B. But again, this would be sort of a townish project, even though it's not technically the town, it's a town like project. So we're assuming that is more favorable to the community. But it would have to go through the review process of the zoning board of appeals. You know, they'd have to do a full site review and engineering and all that. But I do believe what I'm sort of anticipating will happen. And again, the consultant will come, come along and, and help us. And she's more the expert. But I'm anticipating that we'll put out an RFP with sort of a vision. Oh, here's Greg. He's just joining us. We'll put out an RFP with sort of some parameters or vision, you know, that the town envisions, you know, a mix of townhouses or single story homes, you know, something like that where we qualify what we want and then let the development community sort of paint the picture of what it would be, but we would set the framework. So, um, I don't, not sure how that's going to work. You know, I think that's the early visioning that's part of this contract that we'll get, we got from Mass Development where we had some early visioning to sort of set some goals of what the community wants and then get into the RFP process. And so I think it's still early on and it is a bit of leap of faith. I mean, you have, the Housing Authority is elected and, and they're the group that's, um, you know, going to be basically running the show.
Thanks.
Sure.
Uh, Steph?
Of course, forgive me because I'm coming in a little later to this, just, just being, getting on the board. I just want to make sure I understand it. So basically the, the money you guys are going to use is really right now just for, um, the, the changes on their Walnut 140, basically is to get us to the point the, of, um, being able to move forward with, with making that a much safer intersection. So what the money we're talking about tonight really isn't talking about what the pro heading with, uh, the Housing Authority's project. We're just basically trying to get that to a safe, safe intersection, right?
Yes.
And it's stuff we can't, we can't even tee that project up until that, that issue was addressed. That's why it is really well connected in terms of, in terms of the two projects.
Okay. Oh, okay. So nobody, no, nobody's going to approve that project with such a dangerous.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I do want to be forthcoming with this, that it, I mean, honestly, without this project, we wouldn't have gotten the $200,000 in design and we would not get a signal built. You know, we
That's right.
We are nowhere in a list anywhere to get a signal for that intersection, even though it's a state highway and we all would say, well, why would Foxborough be doing it? Well, we're the ones who use it. And the state has a long list of, of dangerous intersections. So honestly, it's, it's kind of leveraging, you know, a project that was already going to happen. It gives us the ability to sort of leverage this project. Without the project, we would not be getting a signal. So, um, it really is the only reason we'd be getting it.
So the project has to go forward at some point.
Yes.
Something will go forward. Yes. But I think, I mean, in looking at the records, this project, quote unquote, project, this property of Walnut Street property has been around since 2000. So this town has been talking about this for a long time. So, and I know Greg doesn't think anything's going to happen overnight. You know, this is, this is a big project and it's a slow project, but, um, you know, we are trying to show the state that we're taking the steps so that hopefully we can get that signal going, you know, right away, you know, as soon as we can to get this more safe for the whole community.
But what, what typically happens in these kind of projects is that they, they really are broken up into several phases. And this is sort of like the initial phase that we have to address before you even come to the table and have the conversation about where we are with the next piece of it. So we have to get this done, but they are intimately connected for that reason. So that's why you have to, you know, you have to, you have to, uh, look at it and leverage whatever resources you have to pay for these kinds of things to get them done. So otherwise we, we, we won't see that happen in any, any one of our lifetimes, otherwise.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm, I'm, I'm sure there are lots of dangerous intersections across the state. So, um, if, is, is there a timetable or, or, or so? When we get to the point, Chris, like you said, that 75% and then you get, you guys can apply, apply for, to have this done. Is, is it going to be, does that have to coincide with the project?
No. So we'll, we're, we're looking to apply for the Mass Works Grant. You know, really this spring, very early in the spring. Once, if we get awarded that funding, that project is a go. That, that intersection upgrade will, will move forward. So as soon as they tell us we've got the money, we'll, we'll finalize the design, get DOT final approval at 100% design. And that construction would then move forward through a bid process and, and that process. So that'll go and then Paige will continue to work on the RFP with the Housing Authority.
Yeah.
To work through that.
And eventually that will make that project much easier to move forward because you've got the beginning steps of, of that. But there's no specific timeframe. Like they're not going to come back and say, you guys didn't get this project done a certain amount of time. So you have to give some of the money back or anything like that. It'll, it'll just be the beginning stage of the project.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we take a vote? Steph, you know that there's, uh, two motions on the, um,
Doc, I think Mr. Spears joined us just since he joined. Greg, before you joined, I had asked if we had the support of the committee and just since you had joined us, I think it would be helpful just to hear quickly from you.
Yes. Yep. This is one of the, uh, cogs on the wheel. We're trying to get as much ready for what we call a shovel ready project. Obviously financing and what ends up actually happening there is still ways away. But this is the, one of the most important things to get that intersection safe. So whatever gets developed is something that we can move forward. So we're trying to make this as attractive as we can to a developer. Obviously the Housing Authority isn't going to be the developer of this. We will, you know, find a developer. So if we have a traffic signal, 16 acres of land, all permitted, ready to go, we're hopeful that we can move it forward. But this is just one of the many things, Paige, and I've been working on trying to figure it out as well as Chris. And the other thing we're hoping that when we do signalize that intersection, that we can get the sewer line roughed in under Route 140 at that same time. So that we can eventually connect it down Walnut Street that would pick up. The Housing Authority has, uh, another development down there as well as Greedus and, uh, the, uh, I, I think it's Stewart Hospital. So we're trying to connect all those to the sewer line. So that would be a wonderful thing. So we just keep chipping away one bit at a time, Paige. And the Housing Authority voted to support this. It was unanimous, uh, uh, from our committee.
Thank you, Greg. All righty, Steph?
Okay. Upon recommendation of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, motion for the board to approve the allocation of $7,500 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for payment to Mass Development for technical assistance to develop a 30B compliant. Request for proposal for the Walnut Street Foxborough Housing Authority Project. This payment will be made upon completion of the Consultant Services Association with the RFP development or within one year of contract date, whichever is sooner.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Thank you. Steph?
Upon recommendation of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, motion for the board to approve the allocation of $30,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for additional costs associated with the design of the Walnut Street Route 140 intersection project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
All right. Great. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Paige. Chris was here too. And Greg, thank you very much. And Greg, thank you for not putting a scene of the ocean behind you again this time.
I, I've been, um, complaining a little bit today that it's been abnormally warm and I'm getting absolutely no sympathy from anybody. So I get it. So thank you. And I heard tomorrow's supposed to be a little warmer up north. So
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. We had a little, uh, uh, did we have a question, uh, Bill for Chris while he was still on? What were we going to ask Chris?
A question.
An update on my conversation with Seth Ferguson and
That's what it was. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. So just, just to touch on that quick, um, I did reach out to Seth after, you know, his, his citizen's input at the last meeting regarding the snow removal and sidewalk safe passage around the common and, and the down uptown area. So it was, it was a good conversation. He did have, he brought up some good points. You know, obviously there was, there was some room for improvement. You know, one of the things that I, you know, expressed to him was it was one of those, I was waiting for the right moment, the right night between storms to go out and haul snow off the common. And we just never got that in those every three days we had snow coming at us. So, you know, we was, it was one of those things where I was waiting for a spot and we didn't, wouldn't get, didn't get the spot. You know, the, one of the things he had mentioned though was, you know, looking through the snow and ice bylaw that it shouldn't, shouldn't all fall in the DPW. You know, it should be a, a community wide effort to make the sidewalk safe to, to move through around town. You know, something as simple as a homeowner with a snow blower, not putting the snow on the sidewalk after we've gone through with the sidewalk machines and cleared the sidewalk. You know, those little snowbanks and windrows, you know, can can create problems. You know, we have to go back afterwards and we'll go back afterwards. But so it was a good conversation. I think we have something to work for, um, going into next winter. Talking to Bill and Christina about a, a PR move. I'm anticipating no more snow this year, so I'm talking about next winter already. So
Like, like your attitude, Chris.
We're, we've talked about that and how we, um, you know, move that forward and let people know that putting snow on the sidewalk, putting snow out onto the street, not only homeowners, but contractors who are plowing for properties and homeowners. You know, when they push snow across the street and, and put a snowbank across the street from somebody's driveway, you know, that can create problems as well for us, even if there's no sidewalk there. So that's something we're going to work, work towards next year.
Thank you for the update, Chris. Next on the agenda, uh, the Foxborough Common Traffic Subcommittee. Chris, are you up again on that?
I'm still here. So the, you know, we were before the board, um, with some concepts around the common for the next phase of the traffic. You know, looking at pedestrian traffic safety around the common. We, we threw a lot of information and ideas out there previously. And the board wanted a, a subcommittee to, to kind of look at those concepts and figure out what was the best next step. So we did meet, um, you know, Stephanie, Ed, Paige, myself, Lance and Ken Fitzgerald with the police department. We actually met with the engineers from Kittleson to go through the concepts that we had put forward in, in more detail. One of the things that, that we had the conversation on was, you know, the back end parking, angle parking was, was really a concern for a public safety standpoint. You know, police department definitely had concerns over that. Especially if you're backing towards a sidewalk where pedestrians should feel safe. You know, and, and that was a concern. So, you know, hearing that, those concerns, Kittleson had, had gone back to the drawing board. The subcommittee had given them direction on what we wanted the next focus to be. And we were really, really looking at the school streets stretch along with the South and Central Street interchange. Is where the focus was, was put for the next step on the common. So, um, we did come up with, and Kittleson did come up with some concepts that we felt comfortable moving forward for the shared streets, shared winter streets grant application to do a demonstration for parallel parking on School Street as well as delineation of that lane line, um, as you come down School Street, going past South Street and Central Street. So those were some concepts that we, we were focused on. And Kittleson is working on finalizing the application that'll go in by the end of the week is the deadline. So that would allow us to this spring actually come up with, you know, the design that they've already provided, um, to do that demonstration, but along with some planters to delineate where the, um, you know, pedestrian, the sidewalks would, would go on the common side. Where the, the striping would go for the parallel parking. And then the delineation, um, for the trial, for the demonstration, we would use similar to the skinny orange cones that are up at, at the main street entrance now to delineate that center line for the trial as well. So that's, that's where our focus is right now. And we're hoping for some grant funding to help us take that to the next step this, early this spring.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the board? Comments from the two representatives?
I think that the revised plan that Chris is talking about will serve the safe movement of traffic, which is always cautionary on School Street.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I mean, it was, it was a great meeting. You know, I know we came back to the board just to get, got, give you guys a small little summary of what was discussed. You know, I, I think like Chris said, our most concern was, was, uh, that. So, so that's the bottom of the common, right, Chris? The, where the workers are done is the top of the common?
Sure.
Okay. I want to make sure we get it right. There's a lot. So, um, yeah. And you know, I, I guess, um, with having, uh, these officers Fitzgerald there, it was good to, you know, really good to get his input because he knows the public safety. And, you know, you know, maybe somewhere down the road, we may be able to think about backup parking or things like that. But I, I, I think it was at least it enabled us to, to move forward for the grant, right? To, to get something done. And, um, so no, it was, it was, it was a great meeting. Lot of information. And, uh, like Ed said, I think, um, this, you know, where we're heading now is, is the best, best we can do for now anyhow. It was a, a little bit of a time crunch because, you know, all the stuff, but, but the grant had to be put in by a certain amount of time. And so, I mean, Paige and, and, uh, Chris, are you guys happy with at least where we're heading?
Yep. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy with it. Um, I think it's a good next step and it's, it's another trial. It's another, you know, another demonstration to see will this work? Will, will be people in Foxborough that are driving here, parking around the common, be able to adjust to, to this change. You know, and, and that's a good next step. And I think the time crunch, I, I think is not always a bad thing. I think it allows it, it gives us that deadline to, to put something on paper and to move it forward. We can talk about options, you know, for years before we decide on something, but this gives us an opportunity to, to push it and to see if it's going to work.
I think the key, the key benefit here, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, in addition to what we all want is to get that Central Street intersection sort of conflict
intersection sort of conflict resolved to work on that. But the, the sort of incentive as well is it's going to improve the pedestrian experience around the common on the school street side. Is that correct, Chris? This is going to give us a walkway on that side of the common.
Correct.
So that's sort of, you know, as we've been talking about this, why mess with it? Why, you know, why are we doing this? Because we keep hearing about the pedestrian safety. And, and like I said at the last meeting, we always balance that. So the benefit to this is it's, it's a trial. It's paid for by the state and we get to sort of test out some of these changes to see if, you know, the, the improvements to the pedestrian experience and to the common are worth the offset that could occur, you know, on School Street. We don't know yet. We have to sort of see how everybody adjusts and whether it works. And, and like you said, the good thing is, is worse comes to worse, it just gets taken out, you know, and, and we tried and, but we are always continuing to try to improve that pedestrian experience up there, especially as we see the common becoming more and more active with the electrification project and with COVID and the need to be outside more. That's, that's sort of what this pushes. In addition to the logistical central street boring stuff, we get the, the fun pedestrian stuff as well, spoken as a planner, not as a transportation person.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you guys for all the work you've put into it so far. Uh, Chris, Paige, Ed, Steph. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Uh, next up, thank you guys. Um, the, um, ba, 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 uh, seven fifty-five Foxborough Country Club. We have a change of manager. Is there someone, uh, representing the, uh, country club?
Mark, it's Bruce Gardner. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Bruce. How you doing?
Nice to see you and all the Board of Selectmen. It's my first time on, uh, local government TV since, uh, my decade with the school committee. So let me start promptly with a thank you to all you for your public service and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So this is just a quick update, uh, for the committee. Doesn't have to take, uh, too long. But, um, you'll recall that John Gray came before the Board of Selectmen a few meetings ago with his willingness at my request as the president of Foxborough Country Club to fill a gap that we had as the liquor license holder and house manager, uh, for the club, responsible for our continuing to be a good citizen and to manage our liquor service appropriately and, and with a community spirit. And we had a few things changed. We, we reorganize every year at the end of the year. We had a few things changed and I heard some of the feedback that you all asked John. And, and by the way, let me just go, go out for a minute on a limb and say thank you to John, uh, for his willingness to serve in that capacity, even though he's a, uh, board of governor and a volunteer who serves on a three-year term for us. But we, I, I listened to some of the feedback that you all had and we had some internal changes as well. And I know Chris, for example, asked John, you know, how long he'd be on the board and serve in this capacity. Stephanie mentioned that, you know, it's uncommon to have somebody, uh, who's, uh, not an employee, who, uh, we wanted to avoid the, the notion of absentee managers, wanted to make sure somebody was on premises. Uh, Leah, uh, asked about Tracy Goulet, who is there all the time as our house manager, but at the time who was relatively new employee. Uh, listening to all of that, uh, it made sense to us on the board to put Tracy forward as the new liquor license holder, as she is our house manager and is an employee of the country club and is there every day, all day long. It's your sole job, unlike John's, who's a volunteer. And, um, this is a simple request and update for the Board of Selectmen that we would like to put in place. Someone who I think addresses some of the questions you all raised. As a full-time employee, Tracy Goulet. Many of you may know her from her terrific work, uh, with Rod and Ride for Kids before coming over to the Foxborough Country Club. She's there every day. She manages our house staff. She manages our bartender staff. And, uh, now that she's been there an ample amount of time, we feel very, very comfortable putting her forward as, uh, an even better candidate for our liquor license holder as our house manager.
Great. Thank you. So I think, uh, I think you're on, um, Tracy, is that you over?
I am, yes.
Yeah. Uh, welcome. Uh, tell us a little bit about yourself.
So thank you. As Bruce mentioned, um, my previous, I worked fourteen years for Rod and Ride for Kids. I was the executive director for their charity. Previous to that, I worked sixteen years for the New England Patriots in various roles, director of community relations and marketing. Um, I spent sixteen years there. Uh, as Bruce mentioned, I joined the club, uh, sixteen months ago. So I was working in events and then joined the role in terms of, uh, managing the bartenders in the waitstaff.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, just one, I mean, Bruce, I commend you guys for, um, kind of moving forward with this. Um, I think it's a much better setup. Nothing against John and, and all that. I, I commend him too, but I think this just makes more business sense. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris.
Uh, Stephanie, I think you had your hand raised?
Yeah, basically, I'm reiterating with what, uh, Chris just said, um, uh, you know, listen, J- John's a very responsible gentleman. Um, and, and you know, my current, my concern was because I'm working this business was, uh, not that he wouldn't do a good job, but like you said, I thought like, wouldn't he rather be on the golf course, you know? And, um, yeah, and you know, uh, alcohol services is very serious and, um, I, I think it's a better fit for you guys as well. Um, you know, of, of course, we all voted unanimous to let John do it. But, um, I, I think you guys are heading in a better direction too for you, for, so, um, I commend you for that as well.
Thank you, Steph.
And good luck, Tracy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I think this better fits the model that we see up there. So I'm glad to see Tracy in this role and, you know, Tracy, in your short time there, from what I've seen, you're, you've done a fabulous job. So I think that there's, there's full confidence in the board that, you know, things will continue to run smooth.
Yeah. Any, uh, any other questions? Obviously, tip certified.
Yes.
And know all about Fox Cares.
I reached out to Tom. I did read some, uh, background on that, but I did reach out to Tom at Tevelino to hear back from him.
Okay, great. All right, Steph.
Okay. Motion to approve the change of manager for the Foxborough Country Club, Inc., from John R. Gray to Tracy Goulet.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Great. Uh, Bruce, thank you. Good luck, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Yep.
Bye bye. Thank you.
All right. Uh, tad ahead of schedule, but, um, we'll do, uh, in our monthly updates of, of, uh, departments. We've got, uh, an update from Conservation. There she is. Oh, you're on mute.
Okay. How about now?
Yeah, you're doing good, Jane. Thank you.
All right. So I am Jane Pierce, the Conservation Agent, for those of you who don't know me. And I have created a PowerPoint with pretty pictures and such to, uh, give you my update. So let's see if I can get it on here. Let's see, share screen. Hold on. I think I have to press great, share screen first. There we go. Can you see it now?
I cannot.
You cannot?
No, anybody else?
I'm sharing my screen.
No. No, that is Hollywood Squares.
Not yet?
No.
Hmm. All right. Let's try again. Hmm. Okay. How about that? Can you see anything now?
Uh, no, still not yet, Jane.
Help, Christina.
Christina, right?
Jane, I'll share my screen and just let me know when you want me to go to the next slide.
Okay, thank you. That was more, that was more stressful than I thought it would be.
Still don't have it.
Not yet.
Oh. There we go.
There we go. All right. So, um, this is my Foxborough Conservation Department update, the year of the great pause, twenty twenty. And, uh, next please. The Conservation Department has, uh, two staff, one myself, Conservation Agent and Land Use Administrator Diana Gray. And she is shared with, uh, between three land use boards, the Conservation Commission Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. Next. The Conservation Commission members are listed on the screen. I won't read them all to you. And basically the commission's three-part mission is wetlands protection and permitting, conservation land, open space management, and public education and engagement. Their vision statement is on the website and basically, they're generally by example, by maintaining the ecological integrity of the town's natural resources, often called nat- natural assets. Providing open space and passive recreation that's accessible for all and, uh, preparing for the predicted climate change issues that are caused, will be caused by flooding, drought, et cetera. Next, please. Pretty picture. Their responsibilities, their main responsibilities include, um, just administering the wetlands protection laws, um, managing two thousand plus or minus acres of town-owned open space, maintaining the open space and recreation plan, providing environmental education, that's my favorite, and accepting gifts and donations for conservation purposes and seeking grant monies for conservation purposes. So the, their first task is wetlands protection and permitting. So basically I tell people that any work, any proposed work within a hundred feet of a wetland or two hundred feet of a stream needs to receive a permit from the commission. And work can mean many things. Now, this is within the, um, jurisdictional areas, cutting or clearing trees or shrubs. So if you want to spend your lawn, let more light in, whatever, grading, um, or building new construction and such, new and previous areas. And people often will ask me, how do I know if they're wetlands and right property? And I tell, I would say, just call the commissions, uh, the conservation office because we're here to help. I receive these questions all the time. You can also look on the commission's website, um, which I have put all of my most favorite, uh, resources that I think are helpful. Next. So the wetland permitting process applicant submits a permit and then the commission reviews the application, performs a site visit. They have a public hearing and then they determine the issue of wetlands permit or not, depending on whether, whether they can or not according to the laws. And if you don't, what happens if you don't file and say you cut down that hillside next to that wet area? This is a problem for which your neighbors will likely call to say things are going on and I'll have to run out there and order a cease and an issue of cease and desist order. Um, oftentimes the landowner may be required to hire wetland scientists to prepare a restoration plan and monitor the area. Not fun. And the second main task for, of the commission is managing the town's open spaces. On the left there, you'll see, um, that's just below the dam. Oops. And on the right is one of our, our rivers that is a crazy wildlife traffic area, which is why we protect rivers. Next, please. So we do manage the land, but rely on our many volunteers. We have land stewards, scouts, seniors, high school hockey team and others. They keep our areas clean and it really does take a village. Unfortunately, this year we were not able to have our senior volunteer, uh, tax write-off volunteers to open up the Lane Learning Center. But we should be able to do that this year, I'm hoping. And we're going to start reaching out to them soon. That's at the Lane property. It looks kind of like it's up in Vermont somewhere, doesn't it? So problems. We had some interesting problems during the, um, time that we were, this last year, actually. One of the main problems was the storybook trail kept on being vandalized. And then, then the final, final one in June was very bad. So, um, Joe Goncalves, who actually created the trail for his Scott Project, um, stepped in and saved the day. He, he set up a GoFundMe page. He and his friends repaired all of the, um, the trail and the posts and everything like that. And, uh, next one. Now the solution, it is repaired. It looks fantastic. He, he modified his, um, posts and the, and the pages so that they're easier. There's more, the more secure and everything. We even had somebody when I was out there last June after it was completed, um, somebody from upwards, upstate New York who came and I, I asked him if I could take their picture. They were very happy to be visiting the area. And our newest conservation project is on Edwards Road at the conservation area that abuts the Nippon's reservoir. The NRC, thank you very much, um, put together a plan to, uh, fix the, um, boat access, the non-ordered boat access and put a couple of extra park, a few parking spots. And, uh, just basically clean the area up. And, um, it is being used heavily from right here. We have new open space from open space residential developments, including River Ridge. The parcel is in the middle picture. There are a couple of parcels that are closer to the street. Um, and part of that is Hocking Ridge, which is a beautiful esker in the center, right along the Rumford River. Pretty excited about that. And then, um, we get the open space from the Durham, Durham Park subdivision, fifteen acres that abuts Murray's Brook and will have better access to that area because it only has a single tiny access on upstreet right now. So that was more good news. And then there will be a proposed water and conservation land swap at the town meeting, the annual town meeting. And, um, I've heard rumors about where this is going to occur. It is actually going to occur, um, basically right next to the Gavin's Pond, which is in the, um, Lamson Road, uh, Water Department area. And it's a sand plain grassland. And these are ranked as critically imperiled in the state. So I'm pretty excited about this as well. A major problem is encroachment onto town conservation land. A picture is worth a thousand words. The outline of the property is at the bottom left-hand side. The rest of the land is conservation land. And, uh, the encroachments are pretty blatant. So I, I've had to deal with that last year. It was interesting. And legally, TV activity is a very big problem. ATVs are not allowed on any count on land. It's been an ongoing problem, particularly in the Rumford River area. Uh, the pictures that were taken down on the left, um, were from the wildlife camera I used in the area, um, a couple of years ago. I've been working with the police to try and stop this. Um, the picture on the right was taken last summer and it's just totally, a totally muddered up area near a wetland in the Rumford River area, which is really discouraging. Campfires and camping is not allowed on conservation area. The, um, point at the Lane property had a, um, a good-sized campfire area that is not, was not permitted. And I went out there and I threw it all around and the boy scouts actually went and cleaned it up before me. But the only people who are allowed to camp out on conservation lands are boy and girl scout groups. And no fires, campfires are allowed. Their third main, um, responsibility is the open space and recreation plan, which is in the process of being updated, but came to a screeching halt last year with pandemic. Next. Um, it's important because it is basically an, uh, action blueprint for communities, open space and recreation decision makers. And it's based upon surveys of, um, town residents. So it's, it's according to their, their instructions, basically. Uh, the purpose is, it has all sorts of great information in it. It educates residents about conservation areas and, uh, problems that are associated with them. And, um, it makes communities eligible to apply for grants through the Division of Conservation Services. So we really need to, we've committed to, I've committed to, to updating it this year. Important components, it has an open space inventory. It's got a seven-year action plan and it has all sorts of great maps. This is basically one of them that was created in preparation for the, um, This is basically one of them that was created in preparation for the, the open space update. All of these, all of those areas were conservation protected. So the status is, it was, it had expired in the mid-'90s. It was updated and approved by the EOEEA in 2011, and saw last year. And the update should be finished next year, this year. Environmental education is one of my favorite things. I've set up all of my favorite discoveries of resources on the commission's website, which is shown on the screen. It was created as to be a resource for my commissioners and for residents and for consultants alike. Like, it has all sorts of great information about conservation areas, trail maps, frequently asked questions, and all the things listed there. Environmental education, our new learning center, which wasn't staffed last year, luckily, was cared for by a native plant horticulturist, Karen, Carol Lund Dean. Without her help, I'm sure that the plants that we had planted, and everyone had planted, might have died last year during the drought. This year, we're hoping to continue on with the landscaping work, and add stormwater swell and educational signs, especially along the all-person strip. Rodeo programs, well, I usually use, hold one every year, but last year we couldn't. Although Conservation Commissioner Judy and I took part during non-working hours in a Rodeo survey that was led by the Mass Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program. So those, some of the, those are some of the critters we fought, it was great fun. Currently, projects include the MVP program, Community Resilience Building, and I'm involved in the town's planning right now, which is, which is ongoing. And it, it basically builds upon the town's updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. I already talked about the open space update. The DPW's West Street Crossing, which we reviewed last, last year, is going to have a project mitigation area that will be located in the Cokeasset River Preserve or Park, whichever you call it, and so I'm pretty excited about that. Currently, the DPW has a couple of filings with, one with us, one of which is the spray grow and which pond water pipes. And the Lane Learning Center is an ongoing educational project that we've been working on. Continuous challenges, trying to tell people why wetlands are important and why we protect them, addressing violations and encroachments, and managing Foxborough's conservation areas. This is Greeley's Pond. So 2020 was a great pause, and we were all physically isolating to prevent the spread of COVID-19, but there was a silver lining. The commission kept conservation areas open for visitors to try and relax and enjoy. And we got a lot of positive feedback from that, and they actually helped keep them clean, picking up trash and notifying, notifying us of problems like camping on the point with Lane property. So, as they used to say, the older conservation maps say, it's your land, enjoy it. And you really never know what you might find in, in Foxborough. We seem to have Sasquatch and horses and trees. Questions, if any?
Yeah, great presentation, thank you, Jane. Any questions from the board?
Hi, Jane.
Hi.
I had the pleasure of being one of, one of a couple of people to meet with Jane every year on Advisory Committee. I was one of her liaisons for a couple of years. And it's amazing what you and your, your group do. And I, I mean, I was amazed, I didn't really know much about, about the conservation areas in Foxborough. And again, kudos, because in, in that little booklet is amazing. And who, who's the young man that put that together for you, Jane?
He was actually one of my interns, Ryan Clapp, who has since become my town Holliston's Conservation Agent.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. So I wound him up and let him go, it was great.
Yeah. Is it, you know, the, you know, you just do great work, and I'm happy to see it continuing.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No question, just, just a comment, you know, good job.
I appreciate that.
Good job.
Jane, question on Cokeasset River Park and that land swap that you guys are doing. And I talked to Chris the other day about the, when they do that, the bridge over in the dam, about maybe putting, sort of fencing up along the water there to keep all the trash that flacks down there. So he was going to look into that, because that is just-
At West Street, you're talking about?
At West Street, yeah. We walk by there every day, and it's just, it's trash receptacle, and it's dangerous. But on Cokeasset River Park, now that that building is gone, are any thoughts of taking that fencing down and just kind of letting that area go back to natural and?
Well, as you know, there's a whole history behind that, which I wasn't a part of, thank goodness. But it is supposed to be kept closed, and it was open, because it's a great fishing spot for people. But it was being vandalized and party, there was a lot of partying and trash dumping and everything. So I did lock it up. In order to take down the fencing, I think that would be cost prohibitive or very difficult as well. And it's actually a pretty interesting area, because it's one of the only sandy areas in that whole vicinity. So all the turtles in the area seem to go there to nest. So that's kind of like a pet place for me, and when it gets dumped on, I get annoyed.
Yeah, it just, it just seems, it seems kind of odd where, you know, that's the only conservation area that I know of around fenced off and locked, you know?
Well, yeah, it, it had to do with the lawsuit that happened there. And it was required to be locked up unless and until the fencing was removed. And if you know, if you've seen the fencing, it's, there's a ton of it. And I don't know, if you can think of a solution, I'm happy to listen, really.
Okay.
I, I don't like to see the partying and, and fires and drinking and trashing the area go on, but it's a great area.
Down, we lived down this end of that area, and it just moved into the woods. And there was a huge fire further off into the woods over the summer, so, I mean-
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
I didn't see evidence of it, but I did see-
And just, I mean, one of the quotes I saw on your slides is, "Nature is always open." Until you get there and it's fenced off and locked away, so.
Well, I'm all ears, I'd love to hear suggestions. I guess it was a very frustrating time for the commission, and like I said, I wasn't around, thankfully.
Yeah.
But, so I'm just following what was required way back when. But maybe the, the board is looking a little like something different at this point. Conservation land should be open to the public.
Yeah, good, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jane, great presentation.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, next up on the agenda, I see Jess is ready and raring to go. Craft Group Temporary Outdoor Entertainment License. Go ahead, Jess.
So I'm here before you this evening to just sort of briefly touch on the Hot Wheels Ultimate Drive-Thru. So this is the third drive-thru-style event that we will have hosted in the pandemic. It's been a very interesting pivot for us from a business perspective. You might recall, we had Jurassic Quest in the fall, we had Magic of Lights over the holidays, and now we'll have Hot Wheels Ultimate Drive-Thru in the spring. We anticipate that the demand for this will be somewhere between Jurassic Quest and Magic of Lights. It's not quite as universal, it's a very, it's a much more targeted demographic. The average age of the attendee is 12 years old. So it doesn't have the broad appeal of Magic of Lights, but it also, we can anticipate it to align more with them, with our Jurassic Quest crowds. So with that being said, the event kicks off on March 19th and runs through April 18th. It's a Thursday through Sunday event. We expect over the court, over the duration of the entire run, a flow of about 40,000 cars. It's completely contactless, it's about a 1.5-mile course. So you receive a ticket, you can, you, your ticket is scanned at the gate, and then you just drive through the course, pausing at certain spots to observe the different setups of monster trucks. So they're completely stationary, nothing's running, there's no noise concerns. There will be, there's a Bluetooth component and a radio component, so you can follow along on like a guided tour as you drive through, but all of that audio is completely limited to the, to the vehicle. Tickets, tickets are purchased on a day-by-day basis, which is nice. So we know exactly what to anticipate on any given day. And then, once you have a ticket for that day, you can come at any point during those operating hours, which are a little bit different, it's not consistent. So every Thursday is from 3:00 to 6:00, every Friday is from 1:00 to 6:00, and then Saturdays are 9:00 to 6:00, Sundays are 10:00 to 6:00. And this event has operated over the holidays, it was in Southern California. Right now, it is in, it's in Georgia. So we've got some, we've got some nice demographic info and just some general operational best practices that, that we can glean from those two previous events. But it's been really successful so far, very well received. It was announced to the general public on Wednesday, it's on pre-sale now, it goes on sale on, to the public on Thursday, and we're really looking forward to it. I hope, and I say this with all of the enthusiasm and the respect for the event, I hope that this is the last time before this board with a, with a drive-through event. Hopefully, this is the, this is the end of, of our drive-through days.
Thank you, Jess. Any questions from the board? No, pretty straightforward. Yeah, everyone shaking their heads, Steph?
Motion to approve the temporary outdoor entertainment license for the Craft Group for the Hot Wheels Ultimate Drive-Thru Event from March 19th through April 18th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
All righty, great, congratulations, Jess, another drive-through event.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Jess.
All right, next we're going to be talking about the Special Town Meeting Warrant. With a lot of discussion over the last couple of weeks on how best to pursue that. I'm going to have Bill give us a thumbnail, a review. We all got a nice explanation from Bill a week ago. Go ahead, Bill.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so this was a situation where I, we had been monitoring the, the things coming through just for the Special Town Meeting warrant, and at the time, we, I asked you for holding it. There were about, I believe there were three articles that we were, there were three or four articles that were under consideration. Yeah, I think there were four. So there was, there was the three collective bargaining agreements and the one article relating to developing a revolving account, a two-new revolving accounts. So I, we, we called for the meeting, and then, and I talked to town council, and they said, you know, that's probably the best way to go, and then, and then, but we hadn't really, really studied the language that much, in all honesty. So at the point that we called for it, I then spoke with Frank and Frank, the town moderator, Frank, Frank Spillane, and we started talking about it, and he had talked to town council. And by the time we were done, we all felt that we, you know, it doesn't really think, we don't think we really need to do a special town meeting, because we think those four items can be actually done within the annual. And, and it's interesting, because both Frank and I have not done a special town meeting in, within an annual in many, many years. And we were all, we were both at a bit of a loss as to how to proceed with that. But, but we were going to figure out, we were ready to do it. But then, when Frank said, you know, let's go back and check that to make sure that, that it was, that we can absolutely do it within the annual, and so we did, we confirmed it with town council, and, and so we, here we are tonight. So, so the meeting, this item for you tonight is, and I hadn't, I really couldn't say, put it out there, you know, forthwith to say to you that, you know, there shouldn't be a special town meeting, because we had to wait till 4:00 today to see if anybody actually submitted something for consideration. Because once the warrant is open, anybody could actually submit something. But the deadline today was at 4:00, so we did not receive any additional articles. So the four articles that we had for consideration are actually contained in the annual, which we'll talk about when it comes up the next item. So, so effectively, there is no special town meeting warrant for consideration before you right now. Though, though I do, I will say to you that unofficially, there is not. What I asked you to do is, is to take up the, the item, which is number, which is the second piece of this article, of this, of this particular item, which addresses the issue of whether a move for reconsideration to actually, to call for the special town meeting for, within the 2020, 2021, 2021 annual town meeting, because we do not think it's necessary at this point. So I did write up a, a, a proposed motion for consideration, and I did provide it for Stephanie, for, for her to read before the board. So I'll turn it over to Stephanie, if, if the board, unless the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address it for you.
Yeah, yeah, before you go, Steph, any questions from the board? Great, okay, Stephanie.
Yep, um, I would, so, kind of a question. So the, the, by us doing this, we're going to save some time, right?
Yeah.
And save the confusion, just, just so people at home realize that this is, this is truly a good thing. Because, yeah, it, it'll shorten it up a little bit, and it'll also, people won't be confused that we're having one meeting, then we're closing that meeting, going into another meeting. So just in case someone isn't really, doesn't understand why we're doing this, it is for the, for the best for a town meeting.
That's right. And it's, and these, calling for a special within the annual is not, not ideal, but it is allowed. And the reason why it even became an issue was because we didn't have a special in the fall. So that's the only reason why it was a consideration at this point in time. But because we, 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 all three of us agree that, that it actually could be done within the annual, it became unnecessary to actually call it. So, so there, so, so therefore, it leads to the, the motion that you have in front of you.
Phil, when you say all three of you, do you mean you, Frank, and Bob?
Frank, well, Frank and Bob is aware of it too, as well, but also the town council.
Okay.
So town council, Frank, Bob, and myself, we all talked about it, and, and we're all happy that it's actually not necessary. So we're all, we're all happy about that, so.
All right, Steph.
Okay. Motion for consideration of the vote calling for a special town meeting that was taken on February 16th, 2021. Move that the boards rescind its vote to call for a special town meeting within the 2021 annual town meeting that was taken on February 16th, 2021.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. I'm going to go to the annual town meeting warrant.
All right, so thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So now we move to the annual town meeting, which now takes up the issue of the, of the four items that were not, that could be included in the, in the annual town meeting. So the only way we can consider them is if the board moves to reopen the annual town meeting to insert those four articles in it. So you have before you tonight the most up-to-date version of the warrants, warrant articles prepared by, by the staff. Katie Lane's been working on that for, pretty much night and day for the past several weeks, to try and make sure that it's up to date, and, and she gave you a most recent version of that as early as this afternoon. So that includes with the possibility, assuming, we made an assumption that you would allow those four articles to go in. So they are, have been inserted into the, into the warrant, but the board needs to take an affirmative action to, to one, reopen the warrant for the, to insertion of these, reopen and close the warrant for the reinsert, insertion of these four articles, and then, two, to, to allow those four articles to be actually placed within the warrant itself. All right, any questions about that?
Okay, and Stephanie, you have the various motions?
Yes. So Christina, is this all one big motion, or am I making a motion, I'm making a motion to reopen?
First one, yes.
Yeah, first, we, is the reopening.
That wasn't written, but if you just make a motion to reopen the 2021 annual town warrant, that will suffice.
Okay. Motion to reopen the 2021 town warrant.
Annual, annual town meeting warrant.
Annual, annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, you're muted.
Leah, yes.
Thank you. Now, each of the other motions should be singular, correct? Yeah, so each one, one at a time, Steph.
Okay. Motion to add an article for the request for funding the steel workers' collective bargaining agreement, fiscal year 2021, Unit A, to the 2021 annual town meeting warrant. unit A to the 2021 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Motion to add an article for the request for funding the steel workers collective bargaining agreement for fiscal 2021, unit B to the 2021 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Motion to add an article for funding the police collective bargaining agreement for fiscal 2021 to 2021 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Motion to add an article for amending the bylaw for revolving funds, current annual town meeting draft article number six to the 2021 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Motion to amend the language for current 2021 annual town meeting draft article number seven to include in the table of revolving fund, two new categories and spending limits for IT and for the Board of Health.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Alright, and at this point, do we close the, uh?
Yeah, so I, I would respectfully ask that you take a motion to close the warrant at this point in time.
Motion to close the annual 2021.
Annual, annual town.
Annual warrant?
Annual town, annual town.
Town meeting warrant.
Thank you.
Second.
Is that good? Or you want me to say it again?
No, that's good.
We're good, okay.
Good. I heard a second, Chris. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Great. Alright.
Thank you very much. That was really well done. I thought, I appreciate your help in that. So we, we, uh, so I, I misspoke earlier. I thought that we, I, I was under the impression that I, mistakenly under the impression that, uh, I'm giving you the most updated warrant. Well, actually Katie reminded me that we're actually gonna send you the most updated warrant, but tomorrow following the action you took tonight. So, so you will see the actual updated warrant with all those actions you took tonight, and it'll be in your hands by tomorrow. Alright, so I just wanted to make sure, be clear about that point and clarify that. Okay? So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Alright.
I'm, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Phil. Um, under the town, um, warrants, 2021, we had two citizens' petitions. Um, we're gonna review one of them, uh, tonight and the other one at our next meeting. Uh, tonight's, uh, petition was, um, uh, let me just pull it up real quick, uh, uh, proposed by Shelley Cornbluth to, to discuss the citizens' petition article regarding the new CIP committee. So I gotta admit, this was first for me. Uh, we'll just, I guess, Bill, open it up to, um, Shelby to make her presentation.
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Shelby, I see, uh, you're on. Uh, please introduce yourself and, uh, talk a little bit about your petition. Oh, you're muted.
You're on, you're on mute.
You're muted.
There you go. You're on.
Nope, still can't hear you.
Are you dialed in on a phone too, or just the computer?
Yeah.
There you go. You're good now. We can hear you now.
No, you're in and out.
Hmm.
Eat loud.
Sorry Shelby, you're, you're, you're coming and going. You're in and out. No.
Hmm.
How about that? Is that better?
Much better, yes.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
So, thank you, um, so now, so thanks for joining. Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Shelby Cornbluth and I'm here with Rafaela Feinsdorf. And we are representing a group of concerned, um, Foxborough voters and residents um, that want to ensure that the town maintains its fiscal responsibility. Um, you know, it's been a tough year for everybody, um, this year. You know, unemployment is extremely high in the state. Um, Fox, there have been residents of Foxborough that have been impacted. And we just want to ensure that we maintain, that the town continues to maintain the fiscal responsibility that it's shown in the past. So, um, so thank you all for allowing us to be here and to speak to you tonight. So, we are proposing, um, a revision to the current capital improvement planning committee, similar to that of the advisory committee. And, um, as you know, the advisory committee consists of Foxborough residents and their goal is to represent the Foxborough community. Uh, currently, the capital improvement planning committee consists of five members. Um, two of those members are not town residents or registered voters. Um, and a third member, um, some may or may not be, um, a registered voter or town resident. So this could result in the capital improvement planning committee, um, making recommendations to the residents of Foxborough at town meeting, um, where the majority of those, uh, committee members are not registered voters for the town of Foxborough. So we just want to make a change to this committee so that, um, all of the voting members are in fact, um, Foxborough voters. And, um, we would maintain the current, um, members as, as non-voting members. That would be like the town manager and the, the school superintendent, um, and the finance director as non-voting members of that committee. So that is, that is, in essence, um, our proposal. There is language in there about, um, the terms and revol, and the revolving of those terms to make sure that not all of the members start and stop at the same time to ensure continuity from year to year. But that in essence is, is our warrant.
Okay. Any, uh, questions from the board?
Um, yeah, I guess I'll start. Um, I mean, I'm gonna be forthright and say, um, very similar article, if not identical. You know, came before a town meeting maybe two or three years ago. Um, you know, at the time, I, you know, I supported it. I, I think, I just wanna say that I, um, no disrespect to any of our department heads. They're all wonderful. I think they all do a great job with their budget. Um, I, I guess, I guess I, I just think this just, all this is Shelby, I, I wanna make sure I'm correct. So basically, the, you, your thing is just that you wanna turn this, you just want this to be a committee made up of Foxborough residents.
Yes, yes. And the, and the, the, the department heads would still be involved in the committee. And obviously they have to make their recommendations, but it's, it's similar, you know, um, you, you know, it's our job as Foxborough residents to make sure that the town is being run in the way that, that we want it to be run. And that is done by electing all of you and, and making sure that, um, we, we stay in line. So it's our job, it's our responsibility as citizens to have an active role, um, in, in this whole process. And, you know, if, if all of the department heads are making recommendations for budgets and there isn't that check and balance before the, before some, it goes to a vote, then, um, it's, it's a little bit of a conflict of interest. And, and I know that, you know, I've watched a lot of the meetings this year. Um, everybody has been extremely fiscally responsible. Um, I have not seen the capital budget this year, but I've looked, watched all the meetings on the other budgets, especially the advisory board meetings. Um, and I think everybody is trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. It's just that we want to ensure that we maintain that. Um, and, and so, and so that's really all, all we're asking.
Mr. Chairman, can I say a few things here? Because I, I think there's some confusion here as to maybe what Shelley may, uh, what the group may, 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 may think they know, but they don't really, I'm not really sure they, they follow the process correctly. First of all, let me just correct a few things. The, the recommendations that come from the town managers committee, which is set up by the, by the charter, by the way, uh, which was voted on by the town's residents to do this several years ago. And by the time bylaws was approved that, that way several years ago, was actually, was, was put in place, um, more or less as the first step of the process. So the first step of the process is that the, the committee, um, the, the, the town manager and the finance director, not even the finance director, because he doesn't actually serve in the, on the decision process. The process is made up of, of the, of the department heads and, um, and of the school superintendent, the, the DPW director, the chairman of the board of select, and then the chairman of, of the advisory committee. Those five individuals, by the way, who are gonna be meeting this Saturday, and you can see this, and you can see this live, actually, how this occurs, make only a recommendation to the, to the board of selectmen and to the advisory committee. So how this works is that there's a recommendation as to what the plan can be to the elected selectmen. And then the, the selectmen, they make a recommendation of send that plan to the advisory, for, for, advisory committee for further consideration before it goes to town meeting. The, the, the town manager doesn't make any decisions about this whatsoever. So the, the town meeting ultimately decides, makes the decision. Not, not anybody, um, on the committee. Ultimately, they only make recommendations to that. And the reason why that's done is because the, the individuals that, that serve in that capacity on the committee are the ones most knowledgeable about, about the equipment and the, and the, and the, and the item, and the if, and the, um, and the, on the, um, purchases that are being made on behalf of the town as to what's needed and what's not needed. And beyond, and beyond that, they, they, they truly understand what the most, the greatest need is occurring for in the, in the various departments. So it's, it's really done on a, for a very purposeful way of doing that, for doing it that way, for structuring it that way. By sending it to, and, and so then it's a four-step process. The first step is, is the committee. The third, the second step is the selectmen. The third step is, is the advisory committee. And then the advisory committee makes the recommendation to the town meeting. And then ultimately, town meeting decides. So all the things that you've, that you've wanted for, you've looked for, it was actually already included in that process. I, I'm not quite sure why, while you'd be doing it at this point, because you, you really can't substitute your process for the process already laid out in the charter. So you'd be adding a fifth layer to that process by doing it that way, for what you're proposing. So I just want to be clear that, yeah, I've read, I've read your article. And, and, and I do think that, unfortunately, um, I just, I wanna be sure, because I've never seen anybody from your group, cut, at, at any of our committee meetings to actually debate any of the issues. And so I just wanna make sure that you're aware that you can have, you have the ability to show up at our meetings. You know, is because it, it's a very open process, it's televised. And then, and then ultimately that decision goes to, goes to the next light layer of the process.
So, so thank you for that, Mr. Keegan. Um, and so, um, I just wanted to say that I, um, I actually did start attending meetings last year before COVID. And I have been, um, I have been watching them, you know, on, uh, mostly, like, the, the reruns on YouTube. I usually watch them a day or two later. So, um, so I am aware of that. So thank you very much for that. And I, and I think that the fact that all the meetings are televised is fantastic. I think the advisory board meetings being televised this year, um, is, is wonderful. Um, especially the fact that I can watch it at any time, you know?
Yeah, that's right.
Sometimes it's Friday night that I'm watching these, my exciting Friday night.
Debate that occurs in those meetings. There's a lot of good, good, uh, discussion.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important that people see that.
Yep. And then the other thing I want to mention is that, you know, I fully understand that the department heads know what they need for their budgets. And I can appreciate that. Like, it's my observation from the past couple of years is that by the time anything gets to town meeting, it's too late to debate. So all debates need to happen before town meeting. Because, I mean, I've been to a, I, I have been to town meetings where there has been some debate, um, and some discussion. But at the end of the day, there's very little that moves the needle at that point. And so any ti, and the only way to impact change is to get involved earlier in the process. So the earlier in the process that that happens, the better off we are. And if the voters and citizens of Foxborough are more involved earlier in that process, then we're going to have more of an impact by the time it gets to town meeting. And, and that's really all we're trying to do. Because honestly, once it gets to town meeting, it's like, the last town meeting was a rubber stamp of everything. There wasn't a, there was not, I don't even remember a single thing that was debated in town meeting last year. And maybe that was because of COVID, but it, it really was, I mean, and, and it was a, almost unanimous votes on everything. So, um, you know, these committees that make these recommendations, the people of the town are really relying on these committees for their recommendations. And so we just wanna make sure that the, that it has that extra level of review. And I think the advisory board does a fantastic job in that, but we would like to, um, add this extra layer for the capital.
So, so I guess my, my, my point to you though, is that you're asking to, for the people that you have on the committee, those are the same people that are represented on the committee that you're proposing. The only difference is that you're asking for them is, is that the moderator points to people as well. And so I think, I think my, my point to you is that, and, and by the way, I'll, I'll just suggest to you that, that the, that the board of selectmen, the advisory committee, they all look at those things very carefully too. And that's the, and then ultimately it's the town, it's the advisory committee's recommendation that gets acted on by town meeting. So I think what I'm suggesting to you is that it's a good process already. I understand your, your point about when it gets to town meeting, but, 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 but there's a reason why that occurs. Is because there's a lot of debate that occurs in the previous meetings. And I think what's important is that advisory committee is actually an arm of town meeting. It's designed to be a dominant company to, to do a lot of the informative questions. I know that, that, you know, you've got Stephanie who served on the, on the advisory committee. And, and she, and she understands that there was a lot of debate that occurs in the, in these items before they get to town meeting. What, what I, what I'm, I'm concerned about what's being suggested here is that you're adding a layer that's already exists. And I think that, and I think unfortunately, we didn't have an opportunity to discuss this. I could have, we could have probably pointed those things out to you ahead of time. But the, the way it came forward was that there wasn't an opportunity to really to get into it and discuss it. So I, I, that's, I'm just pointing that out to you. I'll defer to the other board members if they have anything else they wanna add. But I just, I wanna just give you those sort of points that, to be, so you're aware of, okay?
When I say, I think, Phil, the, the problem is the votes, the, that day at CIP, the votes are taken there on what is going to come forward. So I agree with you then, the advisory committee is gonna look at it, the board of selectmen. But where, that, those, what is going to come forward for CIP has been determined.
Right, that's the process. That is the process. That's supposed to be done that way. So, so I guess my point to you, Steph, is that in, in that respect, I've yet to see anybody really question something that hasn't come forward or should have come forward or, or, or that came forward that should have been, should have been paid for or, or funding requested for. So there hasn't been any situation where things have not come forward or, or came forward that shouldn't have come forward or taken off the list.
But isn't, isn't it all or nothing, Bill? By the time it gets to them?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
I thought the CIP, I thought the CIP is, it, it's a vote to accept the CIP.
No, so, so, so there, so that's maybe where the, where the misnomer is.
Yeah.
That when it comes forward to the, to the advisory committee or to the selectmen, the selectmen can make an amendment to that plan. And all this, or the advisory committee can make a recommend, or don't have to recommend what the selectmen give them. So my point, that, that, maybe that's just a misunderstanding. But ultimately, the plan that we provided is only a, a recommendation. And ultimately, uh, the board of selectmen or the advisory committee can make a change to that.
Yeah.
So, so I just want you to be clear about that.
Yeah. So I would just like to add, uh, two additional comments to that. So, so, you know, I, I, I'm in line with Stephanie. I think that, um, you know, it, it, it seems, or it appears that it's an all or nothing thing. And that there's, you know, very little impact at, by the time it, it gets passed, passed the committee. So, um, so to, you know, so, and, and I'm, I have to say this, that perception's reality, right? So I, I understand that that may not be the process that was intended, but that's, that's the perception. And that's, and that's basically what's panning out as, as reality. The other thing is, is I don't necessarily think this is adding another step. This is modifying an existing step. So you do this today. This is part of your process today. And we're just asking that the voting members on this committee be all, uh, uh, Foxborough registered voters. Because, you know, we're the ones who are, who, you know, you guys all do a great job in managing the town. Um, you know, I know that managing the town is not an easy task, and I think that you guys do a very good job. It's just that it is our responsibility as voters and as registered voters of this town and residents to make sure that we're in alignment with everything. So we're, like I said, we're not adding a step here. We're just adding more, um, we're just changing the voting members of that, that step. And so that by the time it does get to, you know, advisory committee and then, um, town meeting, it's, it's, it, it's well-vetted by the voters. And, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, you know, if there are voting members and, and you've got like three department heads that are voting on a capital improvement plan, and it, it's, it's almost like a conflict of interest. Like, I never approve my own budgets. I, my budgets have to get approved by the CEO of my company. So I can't, like, so it doesn't make sense. I mean, I make recommendations and they come back and challenge out all the time. So it's, it's really just the same thing to make sure that we have that check and balance in place.
So, so, so that's, that's the difference in what you just said. You said, anything that gets recommended is not approved. So that's my point. That's my point. So, so, and it may appear though, that that's in fact been the case in several pa, in past few years. But that's because everything had already been vetted to get to that point before it gets to town meeting. And ultimately, the town meeting. But that's because everything had already been vetted to get to that point before it gets to town meeting. And ultimately, the town meeting. Makes this decision, not any of the previous boards.
So, Mr. Keegan, I, I completely understand what you're saying. I just think that by the time it gets to town meeting. The residents of the town who attend that meeting assume that. It is that those recommendations are coming from. People from the town, not necessarily department heads.
They are, because they're coming from selectmen and from the advisory committee. Those are the people from the town that ultimately make those recommendations to town meeting. We only make a recommendation to the process. It's one step. The other two, other two groups are the elected officials or appointed officials that make that a recommendation from the town. To the town members, to the town meeting members. But I just, I just don't, I just want to just clarify that for you, because I don't know if you're aware of that. And I just. And I'll defer my discussion to the other members of the board at this point. I just wanted to clarify that point. That's all.
I guess I have a tough question and concerns. One. It seemed like to me that it was going to be another level of, 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 of another hoop to jump through. Uh, mainly due to the fact that the C I P committee, the way it is now, is a bylaw in a chartered committee. I think. So, so to me, it looked like this was just another hurdle, another committee, a fifth level. If, if. And I, and I really think it's duplicative, because we do have advisory committee and I, and I, and I. Have to humbly disagree with you, um. In the fact that things have been changed on the, um, on, on the, um. Town meeting floor. I remember a couple of years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, they took a couple of things out of C I P committee.
That's correct.
On the floor. One of them that I remember specifically was, uh, one of the patrol cars.
Yeah.
For, for the police department. So. Things do happen on, on the floor, and I think it was a quite long discussion before, and the, and the town voted and, and took it out. Um, I think if you're looking to maybe add a couple more town people. To the C I P committee, that might require a bylaw change. Or a charter change versus adding another committee. Because I, I, I really do have seen, um, advisory really in, in board of selectmen. Vet the recommendations of the C I P committee.
So, um, so this was intended to, um, not to be duplicative. It was intended to basically take the, uh. The people who are on the committee today who are not town residents and, and, and replace them with town residents that are appointed. And, um, and I do remember the town meeting where the patrol car was, um. Was rejected at town meeting, and it was slipped right back in during the special town meeting.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't describe this. That, that's not fair.
A lot of discussion at the special town meeting to bring it back up again. So. But the case in point, there was a lot of discussion at two different town meetings about a C I P line item. Uh, so it was well discussed, and it can be brought up and, and, and discussed and voted down and voted back at, at town meetings. Um. Any other thoughts from any other board?
Uh, I want to ask a clarifying question. So you mentioned Shelby a couple of times. Um, that should be town residents. So if the superintendent lived in Foxborough and the town manager lived in Foxborough. And were registered voters, would you guys be fine with that?
Yeah, as long as they're town residents. I mean, it's their tax, it's their tax dollars that are going to fund this. And so it's. You know, I mean, as residents, we all pay our, our taxes, and we want our tax dollars spent. In, in certain ways. And, and so, you know, I think that if, if you're a resident of town, you have every right to do, to do that, to be on the committee.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, just a comment or two. Um, I have sat on the C I P committee when I, one of the years I was on the board. Um, I had some of the same concerns going into that. Um, process, because I'd never seen the process, like, you know, been live part of it. Um, I think the process is good. I think it works. Um, you know, everybody mentions everything that comes forward. Um, but there's a lot of stuff that doesn't come forward and just gets the curb for the next year. You know, you look at. The assets that we're, we're buying as a town, the necessary evil. We need. Police cruisers, we need fire engines, we need, uh, school buses, you know, so. Think the process currently is good. Um, you know, whether, um, you know, lives in Foxborough or he lives in, in Seacombe or, you know, wherever Amy lives, you know. So, uh, the process, there's enough opportunity. Um, as it goes up the chain to reject part of it. Um, so that's just my two cents.
Can I ask a quick question, Doc?
Sure.
So I, I commend you two ladies for, you know, kind of paying attention and bringing an article forward. You know, Shelby, I know. Talked to you throughout the years, and you're definitely someone who's in tune with what's going on. So, so thank you for your participation in that. I think with C I P here on the corner, you know, it's, it's been a year. So honest, honestly, I'm a little kind of. Rusty on the process, but we'll watch what goes on Saturday and how the process could potentially be changed or improved. But just to make sure I understand. Your article wouldn't be to change the decision on what's spent on C I P. It's. So not, not how big the pie is, but how it's spent. Once it's approved, am I correct? Or are you to have control of both pieces?
No. So, so my, my understanding is that all of the department heads. Make their recommendations in their budget for, for capital, right? And. I mean, I would assume that they have long-term plans about, okay, this is what we need this year. And then they're, they're, they're forward looking because you don't want any surprises, right? So, um, they make their recommendations, and then this committee reviews those recommendations. And then. You know, there's, I'm sure, debate and, and questions and whatnot, and they make a recommendation that would then go, um. To the next step of the process, right? So it's, it's just really having that, it's, it's really making that recommendation about, you know, with the size and. What it, in what it is. But it's, but at that point, you know, as, as Mr. Keegan said, at the end of the day, the town, the, it, it does get voted on at town meeting. It's more just to. Um, have more impact earlier on in the process as to what gets recommended.
Thanks. I mean, I certainly understand both sides. So it would be to replace the, the group that meets on Saturday. March 5th, that's coming up with five town residents.
And those, those depart, the, there are certain numbers would have to be there as well, you know, representing the departments and whatnot. Yes.
So I guess it comes back to my question. Is this the proper way to change a bylaw and or charter? Um, I guess we have to research that a tad more, because again, I, I'm looking at this. As a fifth layer, uh, the way it's gonna, the way it's presented now, and the way it's probably going to be presented at, at town meeting.
And I did go back and, you know, obviously I couldn't watch the meeting from two thousand and eighteen, but I did go back and look at the minutes. They are online. Because I, I remember this one coming up and, you know, it, it lost by one vote last time and then was reconsidered. And I think it was only. I think it was less than ten votes the second time. So. You know, this has come up before, and I, I won't say it was a landslide. Um, so I think we have a lot of. I think that this is good timing with the C I P meeting Saturday. To have this out here and have people follow and kind of watch the process to see, because honestly, when I look at this, I go back and forth. I, I, I. I see pluses and minuses on both sides of this. So I think the timing is, is really good to kind of. You know, look at it with a different lens and think about how a process, you know, could either remain the same or be, be changed.
So I just, if I could just say one, one last thing, Doctor, I, I just, I get concerned when I see process questions. Brought up about the way things work when, when unfortunately, I think there may not be a full and complete understanding of the person proposing the question. And I think that's, that's where I'm having the biggest struggle with this right now is because I do think. That, first of all, the fact that I live in Seacombe I live in, I still pay taxes too. And I'm, I'm just as responsible with, with the town of Foxborough's money as I am with my own. And I think the same thing would be said of Amy Burdo's as superintendent of schools. Up and prior to that, by the way, it was, it was, it was the superintendent, the, the previous superintendent lives, lives in Foxborough too. So it has been for many years. So I think that part of it is, is really not relevant to the, to the question here. The, the issue is. Is the process, does the process work? And has, has there been any breakdown in the process prior to any of the town meetings? And has the, has the result that's come out of those meetings, ultimately that's come out of town meeting, has, where has there been a problem for the, for that result? And I've yet to see anybody point out to me where the, where the plan itself has been a problem for anyone. So I, I think that's, that's where I'm having the greatest struggle here is that, and look, ultimately, it's the town of Foxborough's decision here. It's not mine. Ultimately, to, to decide this, whether it's right, but, but look at the results that you've had. With it, with the capital planning process that's occurred up until now, and, and point out to me where there's been a problem. Because we, we don't buy anything of which we can't afford it. And you're going to see this year particularly, that this year is going to be a year, we're going to have to defer a lot of things, because we don't want to spend the money right now. And that's, and that's, and, but the other side of it though, the other challenge that if you defer things, they come back and they're more expensive the second time around. That's why you have to be careful about pushing things off down the road every time. They ultimately become more expensive to the taxpayers and the community itself. We saw it happen with town hall, when town hall got pushed off for so many years, it actually cost twice as much to build the building, because we put it off for so many years. So I think that's, that's the problem you run into. And by, by, by changing the process, when the process is, is working, actually working, okay. I haven't seen anybody point out to me that was, that the process is broken, is broken right now, and why it has to change.
So, so I have to respectfully disagree with a couple of things that you said. I, I think we, we do understand the process. Um, that's been outlined. I mean, I, I do understand it. It's, it's more that, you know. As residents of this town, it is our responsibility, um, to be involved and, and, and to make sure that the recommendations are in line. With the strategic direction of the town. And that is all we're trying to do. We are trying to make sure that we get involved. Earlier in this process and are involved in these recommendations, because, you know, we have, we, you know, I've hear these examples, these one-off examples, and, and I, I, I. Completely agree when, before you mentioned the town hall, I was thinking the exact same thing. That project was a lot more expensive than it had to be, because it, it was deteriorated so much over time. So I, I completely understand that, and I can appreciate that. Um, I just think that, you know, as town residents, it's our responsibility to make sure we maintain fiscal responsibility. I have heard all the budget conversations from this year, and I have to tell you that for, for the most part. Um, I've been pretty pleased with, with what the departments are doing, understanding that things have changed. I mean, there's always room for improvement, but, um, but I think that people have been fiscally responsible this year. Um, but, you know, this isn't for this year. This is for the future. This is for every year.
I understand.
And this isn't even going to have an impact this year, because this wouldn't even get voted on until town meeting. So it has no impact for, for this year's budget.
Um, and I, I don't disagree with you, Shelby. I understand you. I understand your concern. I do think though, that if, if you watch the process on Saturday. And I encourage you to do this. We start at eight thirty, we'll be going until probably about one o'clock. You'll see how the discussion goes and what, and the considerations that are given to it. None of those items that get voted on mean anything to me personally. Nothing, nothing mean anything personally to, to the superintendent of schools. They, it's all what's good for the town of Foxborough. All right. That's how it works. And, and the, at the end of the day, I, I don't gain anything by any of those things. That's why. The issue about whether they should be town residents or not on the committee is, is, is that, is a concern to me, because. Ultimately, we're the ones that are probably the most knowledgeable how the finances go and how, and how the operations work, to be able to recommend those things up the ladder to the next group. And so when you say it's, it's our responsibility as residents to make sure we're fiscally responsible. That's also why you have a board of selectmen and you have an advisory committee. That's why that process works. And that's why ultimately, the town meeting doesn't take my recommendation or the superintendent's recommendation, they take the recommendation of the advisory committee. And that's why it's designed for that. It's, it's not, it's so that the professionals that you hire to run the town. Don't make those ultimate decisions. It's the, it's the town itself that makes those decisions. All right. So I just want you to be, to hear the other side of, of, of the coin in that. That's all.
Thank you.
Well, and, and you know something? I mean, I, I'm, I'm not here to, 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 uh, do Shelby's job too, but. I, I, I can't help it. I know that, you know, thi- this article is in first time around, okay? And let's just, let, let's just be upfront with it. It was an advisory committee member who brought it forward originally. And, um, and spent a lot of time on this article. Um, and from what I've heard is Shelby and some other residents wanted to bring it back around. So, um. You know, you know, it's not my, it's not my job to, to, uh, to pitch the article, but where I do know, I, I listened. Extensively, a number of times, this article presented to advisory committee. Um, as, as a warrant article. And, um, you know, I'm going to interject a little bit where I think, um, you know, I think maybe Chris mentioned about, would it be different? If, um, if one of the, um, uh, department heads lived in town. I think originally the article was not, it, it, it had nothing to do if they lived in town or didn't live in town. I think. The original, uh, proposal was about it being a committee similar to advisory or. Board of selectmen who would, um, you know, and again, I don't mean any disrespect to any department head. But it's, it's kind of like the department head brings their request forward, and then they vote on it. And I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying any disrespect to, to anyone or that they're not making, but it's kind of hard. If, if, you know, if I, if I'm the, the, uh. Uh, superintendent and I want new computers, and I bring it forward, do you think I'm not going to vote for it? You know, and, and so that's just an example. Okay, I'm not, so I think there was, there was more to this. Um, other towns don't do it the way we do it. I'm not saying that means we have to switch to what they do by any means. But, um, other towns use a different process. And, um, the person who put this article together originally spent a lot of time putting it together, did a lot of investigating. And, um, so there's more to it, you know, and, and I think, yeah, the, the meat of this is. To have a committee of people who live in this town to vet it, like an advisory committee. Um, and, and so, uh, you know, whether, whether you support it or not, I'm just giving information, because. I heard this article presented two or three times. And it was present, you know, it was presented to advisory committee, and then we came back with questions. And it, you know, and, um, at the time, it wasn't fully supported by advisory committee. There, I believe it was, you know, I mean, we could go back, someone have to go back and look. I want to say there might have been two, maybe that didn't support it. The, the bulk of advisory committee did. I believe at the time, um, that most of the board of selectmen supported it as well. Um, again, I know you're shaking your head, Doc, but I, you know, I mean, we could go back, we could go back and look. Um, you know, what the, what the vote was, but I think more importantly than, than, than just advisory committee or just the board of selectmen. This article didn't pass by one vote the first night, and that's when we had to carry over to the second time. At the second night, and it was six votes the second night. So, um. You know, I know last time, Bill, you said it, it was not very well accepted from, from the town. And you thought it was like a seventy thirty. It was much closer than that. And I think it, it deserves. To, for at least the town to vote on it again. I'm not saying, you know, we're, we'll make a recommendation, however. When it comes time for us to vote our warrant articles, we'll, we'll, we'll vote and, and in, I'm sure advisory. I'm sure you have to go before advisory committee as well at some point. They'll vote. And, um, but, but I think the big thing is at least it deserves to get to, get to town meeting and, and, and let the people vote. I, I think. It was, you know, in, in, and maybe. The fact that not every town does it the way we do it, doesn't mean we're doing it right, doesn't mean we're doing it wrong. But there are other ways to do this process. And, um, and some people have come up with another way. So, you know, I mean, I don't know what town, you know, every year, town meeting is different. Mike brought before a warrant article that wasn't close to passing and brought it back some, sometime later a, as the veterans agent, and it passed overwhelmingly. So, I mean, who knows? I mean, I guess it just deserves to get to town hall floor and let, let the people decide, you know.
The, the democratic process is, the democratic process is such that. You know, because it is a petitioned article, it absolutely has to go forward. And so I'm not arguing that point at all.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It wasn't insinuating.
I'm not even suggesting that it's, that it shouldn't be go forward. It definitely should go forward, because it is a petitioned article. But I do think. That I, I just, I just wanted to clarify the process for people, and if, if there was any question about that. But if, if it's, if, if the intention is different from the, from the process, the actual process. That's, that's, and that's the opinion of those who, who propose it. That's fine.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Shelby, for coming and explaining it all to us. Uh, one note. Saturday, Saturday morning, you know, tune in, uh, look at.
Turn on my TV. Turn on my TV.
Process.
Will it be available for replay? It's a long, it's obviously a long meeting. I know it'll be televised.
It's, it's taped. It is taped. So.
I know, I have to do the advisory committees in a couple of sessions sometimes.
And, and I just want to note Shelby, and I don't really, I'm not, I'm just trying to debate you. And that's, and it's, it's not personal. It's not, it has nothing to do with anything other than to say. I want to just, they just, you know, talk about the facts and what, and how it perceived. That's all.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Alright, Assistant Town Manager's update. Mike has dominated the conversation for the last two hours. Maybe we can. Quickly discuss Assistant Town Manager stuff.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna get us back on track on the, on the time. So really, the only thing I want to say is how proud I am. Of the employees out there who've been showing up to work, doing a great job, providing public services. And it becomes more and more evident to me. As I hear more and more towns that are still, haven't, haven't opened their library, haven't opened their town hall. Haven't opened a lot of their council on agent, those sort of things. So what we've got going on here is terrific. Thank you to all our wonderful, wonderful employees. And that's my entire update. Thanks.
You know, I'm going to piggyback off of that Mike for just a quick second and, and, and it's, has a little to do with the. Fire department and, and the work that they're doing. One, a couple of senior citizens I've talked to. Said they've done a wonderful job going to either. A senior center or call in and to distribute the vaccines. The, the paramedics are wonderful. Most have said that they can barely feel the shot there. They're so good at, at the job that they do. And, and to go one step further, some of the comments I heard about what a wonderful job it's being, that's being done. Up at Gillette Stadium, the thousands, I think they hit a hundred thousand vaccines the other day. It was up on the board. But just as a little side note, supposedly the paramedic side of, of, of Gillette. Seems to run a little bit smoother than the other side. So just put a little plug into all the paramedics. I know it's just, not just Foxborough. But surrounding communities too, that, the, the feedback is they're doing an outstanding job. Thank you, Mike. Town managers report, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just, just the one last additional thought on that is that. You know, I, I too agree with the tremendous work that our, that our employees are doing and. And, you know, and the work that the firefighters have done, but I also point out that the police officers and the DPW workers and the. The people working in the, in the COA and the library, all those people that are. That are doing the day-to-day stuff that, you know, and Mike is correct in saying that a lot of places have not opened their libraries or their COAs. And we, we've got some creative folks that are really helping and, and the veterans agents doing her work on a daily basis. So. It, it, we're very fortunate. We, and I, and I'm very, very pleased and, and. Proud of the folks that we work with because they're, they're very dedicated folks and they're trying to do the best thing for our residents and I appreciate. Everything they're doing and thank you Mike for bringing that up tonight. So, but everybody's doing a great job. So just a, just a brief report for you two as well. Mike, again, just to remind everybody about the capital planning committee. So I think we. We beat that one to death in the last, last session. So, but it's at eight thirty, it'll start at eight thirty. I officially, I'm going to be on around eight o'clock. I guess to, to try and get some stuff started, but I think the meeting officially starts around eight thirty so people can join us then. And then one o'clock on Saturday, and it runs till about one o'clock as scheduled. So. I believe Ed's going to be joining us and, and Doc, you're off for the, for the day. So.
Yeah, I have a conflict. So our vice chair is going to stand in for me.
Okay. Alright, so we will, we will plan and, and all the information has been handed over to the committee itself. For review and we plan to meet with the, it'll be, it'll be a Zoom conference similar to the way we've been doing all of our meetings. So folks, we welcome folks to join us. And then the second one is, we are working on an employee guide, employee guidebook. Which is sort of a culmination of, of all the policies and procedures and so we can put it into one spot so we can be easily. Access for all our employees. And actually was, I have to give credit to, to Leah on this who. Asked a few questions about a few things a few days, a few weeks ago and, and I said, you know, we really should bring this all together under one document to make it easier for everyone. Because we have it in different locations and I think it's probably easier if we just did that. So we, you know, there's, there's some different debates about whether employee handbooks were a good thing. I'm on the side of that, that thinks that they are a good thing and I believe. That it's helpful for employees to have in one place. So we've been working on that over the past few weeks and. The staff has been doing a great job of, of working with us and. You know, Mike has written a few sections. I've written, rewritten a few sections and Katie's been sort of assembling the whole document. So we're. We're hoping to have a first draft of that ready for the, for review by the personnel board probably within the next, probably the next few weeks. So we, we'd like to have counsel, our, 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 HR counsel, Jack Dolan weighing on it as well. And then we'll, we'll present it to the board for your consideration for adoption. So. But certainly, if anybody has any questions that would like to see it. As in a draft format, you know, we certainly can reach out to me and, and we'd be happy to go over it with you and see what you have, what we have already for, assembled to this point.
Yeah, Bill, I think, I think that's all great. I think. The personnel board hasn't even met in a long time. I don't even know if we have the right people, Mike. I know you sent me who's on it, but I. Have to look up the makeup of the committee. I feel like that board has, has been rather inactive for a while that this, to me is a really important. Piece and I think we need to have. We need to kind of lay the foundation a little bit and make sure that it's even the right. Process. I, I, I think we need to just back it up a little bit.
Well, they, they are, they are the right step in the process in terms of going. And I, I don't, I can't actually, I can only send it to them. They're an advisory committee. So they don't make any final decisions, but they're advisory. And so that then it gets, and then ultimately the board of selectmen actually review, makes the final decisions on the, on the, on the, on the policy book itself. So I, I, I use them more as a sounding board more than anything. So as opposed to a, you know, and I, and I, you know, that's the only process I have right now. So I, I don't know if I, if I can do anything differently in that respect.
Okay, so they're, they're just making a recommendation.
Yes.
And it comes to our board.
Right.
To actually, okay.
To, to, to make final decisions on it. Okay.
If I could, through Mr. Chairman, it's the same as we did with the COVID policies. Every one of those personnel policies, after they were drafted, we brought them to the personnel board. Back in March and April, and then they came in front of the board of selectmen for approval.
Okay.
It's the same process.
And, and we do have, that is a full board with the appointed member, you know, from the AdCom. So that it is a full committee.
Yeah, I thought there was two AdCom members on your list. That, that's what made. You know, I didn't, I didn't have a chance really to circle back on it. So that's my fault.
Yeah, so the, there were two, but one is an alternate, just in case one of the other ones can't make it because we had a lot of those. Policies coming through. We wanted to make sure we could assemble the full board.
Alright, um.
But if you, if you want to take a look at the, at the, what we have for a draft, Leah. Feel free, you know, anything we can, to try and make the process easier, let us know.
Yeah, because I'm seeing, so one, two. Okay, I'm seeing four people plus two AdCom people. Okay, so my fault. I stand corrected on that.
Alright, um.
So Mike, so, so right now there are two AdCom existing members on? On, on there?
No.
Okay.
No, there's only one AdCom member that's on that board, but Dennis is on there as an alternate.
Okay, because I actually got appointed and then. I, then I pulled my papers for selecting, so I stepped down from advisory committee. So I had never heard, did, did they just realize? Because I think we had one, I think it was Brent before me and then he, he decided to run for school committee. And so I had never heard that there was a, an alternate and then I didn't, so obviously they replaced me. Once I had to step down, but I had never heard of, of an alternate. So that, that's good. So there's, there's two, two representatives. One, one will, one will, one will actually be it. If they can't make it, you'll, you have a backup person.
Exactly. So Brian Kildes is the, is the voting member of that, of the personnel board. And, and I was asked if they could have a second person to, to, to listen in and be ready if they needed to have a person stand in.
Oh, good. Good. That's great.
Alright, so moving on to the next thing. The, the budget process continues to move forward as, the good news is that we've been able to trim back. The budget even further than we, than we thought originally. We had a situation where we do not have to carry as many cruisers in the, in the, in the police budget. So we trimmed back about fifty-four thousand dollars in that request. And also, and I, and I mentioned, I think I mentioned this the last meeting, that we, we saved about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in our, on our insurance bill for next year. General insurance and then another hundred thousand or so, maybe less than that in terms of our health insurance. Bill as well, because that can, we had budgeted three percent, that came in at less two point six percent. In terms of our next year's budget. So, so then now the, the overall budget is coming in around two point seven five percent for everything. Which is a much better position than we thought. So we were, we were over three initially, but now we're down to about two point seven five. Which is much closer to the goal that we wanted to be in the first place. So we're moving, we're making really good, good headway in that direction. We're still waiting for the southeastern mass estimate. We haven't seen that yet. Once we have that, we'll be pretty clear about most of the requests for the budget itself. And then also, I had an opportunity to meet the, the new congressman Jake Alkenclaus. A week ago, he was, I was, I spoke at the, at the chamber meeting along with the other fellow town managers from the Triton Chamber. And he was present for that meeting to introduce himself and we met his staff members. And then I also presented him with a letter, him along with the two senators that the board had reviewed at the last meeting. In support of the, the federal aid package for, for COVID relief. Which is now passed, passed the house and on its way to the senate for further consideration. So that's, that's good news in that respect. And then finally, two, two final thoughts. It's been a while since we've actually, then the board has actually looked at its liquor fees. Liquor license fees. It's been, I think about ten years from what we've been able to research. And so it's, we're going to take a look at that and see if in fact we should be boosting those a little bit and, and, and given the circumstances that. You know, it hasn't, it's been quite a while since we've done that. And I, then some of the rates sound, sound, sound low. Our goal is not to be the highest, but certainly we're trying to be at least in the middle. And, and I'm not sure if that's in fact the case. So we're going to research that a little bit more and get back to you with that.
Bill, I would respectfully just consider if we've waited ten years during the middle of a pandemic may not be the best time. To increase, you know, if we wait one more year on it, that's just, you know, my personal opinion, why.
Yeah, my goal would not be to bring it forward for this year. It'd be better to start the process and to at least get the research ready so we can look at it for the following year. So yeah, my goal is not to bring it forward for consideration this, this current fiscal year. Okay, and then also the annual town reports are in and, and I know that Kate, Christine's been working on those. I think just about everybody's reporters and so I do appreciate everybody, you know, getting those in on time as, as we have been requesting them. So I do appreciate that and we're moving forward with that. We should have those all available for everyone by. By, by, by town meeting, of course. We'll have it all printed and ready to go. Couple of things we, we still owe you and that is the policy and, and Leah gave me a couple of reminders today. The policy pertaining to economic development fund. We want to get a policy and we're working on that piece. And then also a new evaluation format. That's consistent with the goals and objectives that were outlined by the board for the town managers review. And we've got a couple of thoughts on that, but I do think. Quite honestly, that it probably would be helpful if I had. A couple of members of the board work on that with us because we want to make sure that whatever we bring forward. Is something that everybody can live with. And we, and at least get some, some buy-in from the board ahead of that because it's a process where. It's a new process this year and we're running up against the, the deadline of, of looking at that for the, the reviews kind of come up probably about sometime in April. And it has to be done really by the end of April, so before the board changes. So I think that's, so we'd like to try and get some way in on that as soon as possible. Alright, that's all I have.
I don't think that one needs to be a lot of heavy lifting. I think it's kind of replacing the generic form we used to have with.
Okay.
Worked to create last time. So are we going to be doing that by paper or will the system be in place? That we've been talking about to do that on a tool?
I want to refer, well, I, I think the, the town manager's format was one, it was done. It can be, it was done by paper only because it was our form that we have. It's electronic form. That we'll be able to send to everybody. You can actually fill it out. But we'll, we, we don't know the answer to that yet. We're, we're, we're going to look at what, what our options are for doing that.
We're on track for the applicant tracking system for our HR software. We did not fund the evaluation piece. We're hoping to be able to do that in the coming year.
So that was funded though before. It's not like it's a new tool. We had a tool. Anyway, it's not, it's not for right now, but I think it would be helpful to know if we're going on paper or electronic when developing the form.
Yeah, the.
Just give it on paper.
Okay.
Yeah, the previous form Leah was, was, was paid for, but then they, then the, the budget they came, then the price they came back, they jacked the price on it. The point was, it just wasn't avoidable. So it wasn't affordable for us. So we have not been able to find a one that fits into the budget yet, but we did look at, we have some prices that we think will be able to work for the next fiscal year. So we, we do have that.
And then just going back to the annual report, I don't know if there's time, but I always think it's a good idea. For a fresh set of eyes to just take a glance through before it's printed. I'd be more than happy to, to look through. I think it is. Probably just a good idea if we can do that. If not, I understand if timing's too tight, but just a recommendation.
I do have a, a couple of people who I'm working with on the design and the content of it, who will be reviewing it before it goes to print. And we have included the IT department and the facilities as requested from last year. So we'll be doing that and I think we'll have a really. Good report for this year with all the information focusing a little bit on COVID. Working with Jack Ophellet and the Mark Franzer from the historical commission. On looking back at the previous pandemic, comparing it to now and using that as part of our dedication. So. Still in the process of putting it all together and reviewing everything, but should have a, a rough draft at the end of the month and go forward from there.
Are you, are you looking, Leah, is your question more on the lines in terms of editorial review or desired review?
You know, not to beat around the bush, some poor person, three poor people's salaries were printed at the top of every page. You know, just a fresh set of eyes to make sure that there's nothing glaring, not to get in the weeds and, and change anything or change wording, just. A fresh set of eyes before it goes to print.
Process, I think it's always good to have a few people look at it just before it goes to final print because. The more you look at something, the more you become blind to it. So I, I, I can understand that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, when you, when you look at it, you, you miss, I do it myself at work, you know, you miss.
Yeah, we do it all the time. We do it all the time. Especially if you've been looking at it for, for weeks on end, you become, you become blind to it. So, fair enough. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
That's all I have.
Anyone for selectmen's update?
I actually have something, something a little interesting. So I was on Facebook yesterday. And Scott Rodman put a post that yesterday was actually the twenty-year memorial anniversary. For Jerry Rodman's passing. And so I was reading all the comments underneath, you know, just how much he loved Foxborough. And so I, I, I was just wondering if you'd just give me a second just to share a quick story because. I actually worked at the End Zone. Before I knew Jimmy or before I lived in Foxborough, had any ties to Foxborough. So I got to know Jerry and Jerry was a selectman at the time. And so he, he was, he, he was a pretty incredible guy. He was really great to his employees. And it was interesting because I also would be the waitress for the Rotary Club when they would come on Mondays. So, and, and. People would come, like I, I got to meet. Very, you know, great Foxborough families before I was even married to somebody from Foxborough, you know, the Donleys would come in to dine with the Rodmans and. The Buckley's and just different people that I had met on Rotary. So I, I felt like I like started to know how special Foxborough was before I had any ties to Foxborough. And so Jerry called me into his office and he said, he said, hey, the kid's here today. And I was looking at him like, like who's the kid? Well, the kid was Drew Bloodso. So he would call him the kid. And he said, he's down in room one twenty-three. He said, I want you to go down there and give him whatever he wants. And I, I think I, I looked back like, like almost like, what are you asking me? And I, I think I, I looked back like, like, what are you asking me to do? And he started to laugh, he said, no, no, go sit down and see, does he want a soda? He goes, no booze, he said, I don't want to hear from, from Bill Parcells. He said that, that we served him booze here and, you know, he said, maybe he wants a burger or whatever. So anyhow, he was there to do an interview and uh, Jerry agreed to let them have a room for them to uh, to do this interview. So afterwards, before he left, Jerry said, um, come on, you know, get into a picture with the kid. So he took a picture of me and Drew. And about a week later, he called me in his office, gave me this manila folder and said, um, I have something for you. And he handed me this folder and there were two eight by tens of me and Drew and one of them was autographed to me. And so I looked at the second one and I said to him, um, I said, would you like me to autograph this one and you can get it back to him? And he just belly laughed, you know, and um, it just, you know, before I had a tie to Foxborough, I would see people would come in to see him and um, uh, there were, you know, some people were, you know, coming because they were on hard times, whether they were coming to see him as a selectman or just as a guy in town that cared about Foxborough. And you'd see him reaching his pocket and, you know, give them a fifty-dollar bill or a hundred-dollar bill, just because they were in hard times. So anyhow, I just, I just thought to myself, um, wouldn't he laugh to, to think that now I'm sitting on the Board of Selectmen in Foxborough where I had no ties to Foxborough at the time? And you know, he was, um, he, his family were pretty special to Foxborough. He, I mean, Ed, I can see you grinning and um, you know, you probably know this, he just, he loved Foxborough. He loved the people and, and, and the people loved him. And I just thought it would be nice to um, just recognize him that, that yesterday was his twenty-year memorial anniversary. And he was a pretty special guy for the town of Foxborough, so I just thought I'd mention it.
Well, thank you, Steph.
Very much so.
Said. Yeah. Um, one uh, final note, you know, anybody that's thinking of running uh, for a elected office, I think the last day, is it, is it March fifteenth that uh, papers have to be turned in by? Yeah.
March fifteenth at uh, five PM to the town clerk's office for picking up papers and fifty signatures.
Yeah, just to, to remind anybody that wants to run. Uh, other than that, uh, let's um, go to action items, Steph.
Okay. Motion to approve extended occupancy hours for Jake and Joe's Sports Grill on March sixth and March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one until two o'clock AM with food and alcohol service to remain as in existing license. Approval may be rescinded for any and all dates requested if COVID restaurant operating regulations change. The Board of Health deems it unsafe to extend the hours or Jake and Joe's Grill is found to be in violation of COVID with restaurant operating regulations.
Any further discussion?
Did the Board of Health see this one before it came to us? Like, did they, did they?
They did, they approved it, it's the same as CBS, they had the same regulation.
Uh, roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Yes.
Motion to accept with gratitude a two hundred dollar from the Friends of, so, one more time. Motion to accept with gratitude a two hundred dollar donation from the Friends of Foxborough Recreation for Easter recreation programs.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Motion to approve the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.